Good morning. I will now call the May 6, 2025 General Legislative Session of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors and the Fire Protection District meeting to order. We would like to take a moment to acknowledge the land we call home. There are communities in the San Diego region that face unjust conditions and circumstances related to the environments in which they live. The tribal nations of the San Diego region are one example of a community that has historically faced such injustices. We acknowledge the harmony that existed between the land nature and its original peoples, who have since endured displacement, persecution, and systemic oppression. We pay our respect to the unceded territory and homelands of the 18 tribal nations in our region, the most populous county in the United States, and we aspire to learn from indigenous traditional knowledge and experiences in undoing the injustices of the past. Andrew, please call the roll for today's session.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. Supervisor Anderson.
Here.
Supervisor Montgomery Stapp.
Here.
Supervisor Desmond.
Here.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer.
Here. We will now have Reverend Scott Santarosa S.J. of Our Lady of the Guadalupe Parish deliver the invocation, and Paul Downey lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
I invite each of you to call to mind a great leader in your own faith tradition, living or deceased. I am calling to mind today Pope Francis of the Roman Catholic tradition, but who was seen as a leader by many in this world. The care of the earth was important for him, and I will read this prayer for our earth in his encyclical Laudato Si. I invite you to pray along or to channel words of your own religious leader as I pray. All powerful God, you are present in the whole universe and in the smallest of your creatures. You embrace with your tenderness all that exists. Pour out upon us the power of your love, that we may protect life and beauty. Fill us with peace, that we may live as brothers and sisters, harming no one. O God of the poor, help us to rescue the abandoned and forgotten of this earth, so precious in your eyes. Bring healing to our lives, that we may protect the world and not prey on it, that we may sow beauty, not pollution and destruction. Touch the hearts of those who look only for gain at the expense of the poor and the earth. Teach us to discover the worth of each thing, to be filled with awe and contemplation, to recognize that we are profoundly united with every creature as we journey towards your infinite light. We thank you for being with us each day. Encourage us, we pray, in our struggle for justice, love, and peace. And all loving God, we ask your blessing upon the county board of supervisors and upon their conversation and upon their meeting. May they today and always seek the common good. We make this prayer in the name of the Creator of us all, who lives and breathes into us the breath of life. Amen.
Please place your hand over the heart and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the proclamations. The first proclamation will be given by myself honoring National Small Business Week. Accepting the proclamation will be Lucy Montgomery and Danny Fitzgerald.
Good morning, everyone. I am very happy to present a proclamation today honoring National Small Business Week. Small businesses are the heart of the American economy. They're built by people with big dreams, people who work hard, take risks, and believe in a better future. From family-run shops to tech startups, small businesses power our communities, drive innovation, and help boost our local economy. Whether it's on farms and factories or at the cutting edge of technology, small businesses are deeply rooted in our communities, creating jobs, solving problems, and shaping our future. So even through tough times, small business owners have shown incredible resilience. They've kept going, kept striving, and kept creating opportunities for others. They do not just keep our local economy moving, they shape the character and the culture of our neighborhoods. Five years ago, before I became a county supervisor, I was running my own small business and trying to make it work as a single mom of a small infant. I understand very deeply the risks, sacrifices, and sleepless nights that small business owners face to make their businesses and our communities thrive. With tariffs and barriers to trade driving up costs, San Diego's small business owners are now really facing the squeeze. So we must step up and have their backs. The Trump administration has indicated that they want to eliminate funding for vital programs through the Small Business Administration that support women-owned and minority-owned businesses throughout the country, including the elimination of women's business centers. In 2023, our very own San Diego Women's Business Center was invited to the White House to receive an award recognizing them as one of the nation's best small business centers. Now even that center is under attack. Entrepreneurship is not just a career path, it's one of the most powerful ways to transform lives and build our economy. When we lift up small businesses, we're investing in people, in families, and in an inclusive future where everyone has a shot to succeed, not from the top down, but from the bottom up and the middle out. So now, therefore be it proclaimed by members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors, that the week of May 4th to 11th is National Small Business Week throughout San Diego County.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the county and the Board of Supervisors. We appreciate it. I'm Lucy Montgomery from your San Diego office of the Small Business Administration. And I have some good news for you. We are open for business. You can call us. We are supported by the wonderful people and resource partners behind me. And just for a second, I just want to call them out. We have Regional Director of our Small Business Development Center, Danny Fitzgerald. And I'm going to take a note, Danny Fitzgerald's Small Business Development Center has multiple times been awarded as a regional center of excellence. You're not getting just support from just anyone here, you're getting the best of the best in San Diego. Also, right here, we have Steve Civitz, mentor and chair of Community Relations for Score Mentors. You can get help and support from Score Mentors anytime. You can just sign up right online, match yourself with a mentor, and have a long-term relationship with someone like Steve, who gives back to this community since he retired from corporate business six years ago. Our score chapter was top 10 in the nation. Next, we have Cynthia Harris. Cynthia is unfortunately, well, taking the drip, right? So she has been a wonderful asset to the San Diego small business, and I just want to honor her for her work as our lender relations specialist, helping all local lenders. And you'll find the San Diego lending community to be amazing, in no small part from the help Cindy provides them. Also, we have Catty Abara. Catty is our director of our Women's Business Center. Our Women's Business Center, as the chair mentioned, is one of the best in the nation. Then we have Tracy Cole. If you didn't know it, we have a Veterans Business Outreach Center. Help for veterans, free of charge. They can go in, they can get all the support they need from Tracy and her staff. Alls you need to do is either contact me and I can connect you, or just go right to their website, SANA, and you'll get a human person to assist you. So the most important thing about Small Business Week is not the SBA, it is not even our resource partners, how much we love them, but it is the small businesses, okay? How many in the crowd own a small business? Yeah, there we go, a couple, quite a number of you. Without you, I mean, most jobs in San Diego are from small businesses. Most of you know someone who owns a small business. Most of you partake in small businesses. Without small businesses, our community would not be the same. Small businesses are philanthropists. Small businesses support your local community. So I'm going to ask you today, in honor of National Small Business Week, to go to a small business, buy something from a small business, go out to dinner at a small business, write a good review of a small business, you know, maybe do your social media of a small business, go out to that club. And on behalf of the Small Business Administration, I've gone over my one minute, but it's just so exciting, it's just so exciting for National Small Business Week, and I just want you to know, we're still there to support you and defend you, every single small business in San Diego County. And I want to turn it over to Danny Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Susie. Thank you Supervisor Lawson, and thank you the Board of Supervisors. We're recognizing National Small Business Week. Lucy said it all very well, but this truly is in recognition of the thousands and thousands of small businesses. We have the honor of RIA's Resource Partners of supporting over 10,000 small businesses every year here locally in San Diego County, helping them be able to access capital, access government contracts, entrepreneurs to start their business, and really better be able to navigate all the challenges that exist regardless of the times. And so we want to thank the Board of Supervisors for recognizing National Small Business Week, and to echo what Lucy said, absolutely, go visit a small business this week. Thank you.
Okay, let's get a photo. Come back here, get a picture. I'm going to take the job. She's the boss, she's the boss. We all wear many hats. Her arms are pretty. Smile, heart.
One more, one more, one more.
Smiles wide, two, three. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, the next proclamation will be given by Supervisor Anderson honoring Paul Downey. Accepting the proclamation will be Paul Downey.
I am very pleased to recognize Paul. I'm excited to be here today as we honor Paul Downey, who has served as the president and CEO of Serving Seniors for three decades. During that time, Serving Seniors has made a significant strides in addressing the critical issues of senior hunger, affordable housing, and access to wellness services. Under Paul's leadership, the organization has become a leading advocate for senior well-being, gaining international recognition for their innovative approach. Paul has always been a forward-thinking community leader, and we can't thank him enough for his 30 years of distinguished service. Paul's study at Serving Seniors led to the shallow rent subsidy program that we implemented at the county. Just a little bit off note, Supervisor Lawson Reamer and I were invited to serve seniors when we first got elected, and it was a real eye-opener to be in that community, because people were walking in the doors from all walks of life. And then Paul later did an op-ed in the paper and talked about how $500, up to $500 would keep people in their home, and these are people that would otherwise become homeless. And the biggest mistake they made is that perhaps in the 80s, they retired on $60,000, thinking it was a lot of money, and yet today we know that's barely enough for rent. And I want to thank my colleague, because we served the best lunch that day. So this incredible program has not only kept many seniors in their homes, but it has enabled them to thrive. As Paul prepares for the well-deserved retirement this month, we want to acknowledge his profound legacy, an incredible career defined by compassion, innovation, and dedication. Paul, thank you for everything that you've done to help seniors throughout San Diego County. We wish you the best in your retirement. And now I'd like to read the last paragraph of this proclamation. I'm going to give it to you now to hold. "Be it proclaimed by the members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors this sixth day of May 2025, that they commend Paul Downey for his outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens of San Diego County. And hereby do declare this day to be Paul Downey Day throughout San Diego County." Paul, thank you for everything that you've done for us.
Appreciate it, thank you. Well, thank you Supervisor Anderson, and thank you to Supervisor Lawson Reamer and the entire board, this board and actually all of the previous boards, because over the last 30 years, you have always had our back in the nonprofit community. At Serving Seniors, we have multiple partnerships with the county. Supervisor mentioned the meals. We'll do 1.5 million meals this year in partnership with Agent and Independent Services. Those meals reduce hospitalizations 75%, reduce hospital costs 67% for folks who receive the meal. So it is more than just a meal that we've been honored to provide and will continue providing. As the supervisor mentioned, the shallow rental subsidy program, shared housing, and multiple other things that we've partnered on have created a lasting impact. And we've also partnered on affordable housing. Most recently, the new project in Claremont that'll have over 400 units on the former county crime lab site, including over 174 for seniors. Our project in Ramona has had county support. So it's a long and intertwined and positive partnership that we have had over the last 30 years. And as I move into retirement, I'm not going to be sitting on the sidelines, you still may see me here every once in a while on things, but I'm really proud that Melinda Forstey, and Melinda's right here, is our new president/CEO as of Friday. She's been with us for 16 years, is very prepared, has the empathy, the compassion, but also the business sense to lead the organization into the future. So I am very grateful for the support from the county. I'm honored and humbled by this recognition, and I look forward to seeing great things ahead. Thank you.
Norm, she's waiting for us, so this is a change of pace.
Smiles, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the next proclamation will be given by Supervisor Anderson honoring Paul Downey. Accepting the proclamation will be Paul Downey.
I am very pleased to recognize Paul. I'm excited to be here today as we honor Paul Downey, who has served as the president and CEO of Serving Seniors for three decades. During that time, Serving Seniors has made a significant strides in addressing the critical issues of senior hunger, affordable housing, and access to wellness services. Under Paul's leadership, the organization has become a leading advocate for senior well-being, gaining international recognition for their innovative approach. Paul has always been a forward-thinking community leader, and we can't thank him enough for his 30 years of distinguished service. Paul's study at Serving Seniors led to the shallow rent subsidy program that we implemented at the county. Just a little bit off note, Supervisor Lawson Reamer and I were invited to serve seniors when we first got elected, and it was a real eye-opener to be in that community, because people were walking in the doors from all walks of life. And then Paul later did an op-ed in the paper and talked about how $500, up to $500 would keep people in their home, and these are people that would otherwise become homeless. And the biggest mistake they made is that perhaps in the '80s, they retired on $60,000, thinking it was a lot of money, and yet today, we know that's barely enough for rent. And I want to thank my colleague, because we served the best lunch that day. So this incredible program has not only kept many seniors in their homes, but it has enabled them to thrive. As Paul prepares for the well-deserved retirement this month, we want to acknowledge his profound legacy, an incredible career defined by compassion, innovation, and dedication. Paul, thank you for everything that you've done to help seniors throughout San Diego County. We wish you the best in your retirement. And now I'd like to read the last paragraph of this proclamation. I'm going to give it to you now to hold. Be proclaimed by the members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors this sixth day of May 2025, that they commend Paul Downey for his outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens of San Diego County. And hereby do declare this day to be Paul Downey Day throughout San Diego County. Paul, thank you for everything that you've done for us.
Appreciate it, thank you. Well, thank you Supervisor Anderson, and thank you to Supervisor Lawson Reamer and the entire board, this board, and actually all of the previous boards, because over the last 30 years, you have always had our back in the nonprofit community. At Serving Seniors, we have multiple partnerships with the county. Supervisor mentioned the meals. We'll do 1.5 million meals this year in partnership with Agent and Independent Services. Those meals reduce hospitalizations 75%, reduce hospital costs 67% for folks who receive the meals. So it is more than just a meal that we've been honored to provide and will continue providing. As the supervisor mentioned, the shallow rental subsidy program, shared housing, and multiple other things that we've partnered on have created a lasting impact. And we've also partnered on affordable housing. Most recently, the new project in Claremont that'll have over 400 units on the former county crime lab site, including over 174 for seniors. Our project in Ramona has had county support. So it's a long and intertwined and positive partnership that we have had over the last 30 years. And as I move into retirement, I'm not going to be sitting on the sidelines, you still may see me here every once in a while on things, but I'm really proud that Melinda Forstey, and Melinda's right here, is our new president/CEO as of Friday. She's been with us for 16 years, is very prepared, has the empathy, the compassion, but also the business sense to lead the organization into the future. So I am very grateful for the support from the county. I'm honored and humbled by this recognition, and I look forward to seeing great things ahead. Thank you.
Norm, she's waiting for us, so this is a change of pace.
The final proclamation will be given by Supervisor Jim Desmond honoring the San Diego Rescue Mission. Accepting the proclamation will be Donnie D.
It is my honor to welcome Donnie D., the president and CEO of the San Diego Rescue Mission, and his leadership team here today. Paul Armstrong, he's the Chief of Staff and Senior Vice President of Programs. Paul, welcome. Michelle LeBeau, she's the Senior Vice President of Development and Community Engagement. And Tim Marusik, he's an alumni ambassador coordinator. And James Case, he's a graduate of the Mission Academy and a six-year Navy veteran. So thank you all for being here with us today. But the San Diego Rescue Mission was founded in 1955 and provides food, shelter, and guidance to homeless, abused, and hungry individuals. Today, the San Diego Rescue Mission helps people transition off the streets through their no-cost programs and to help people stay off the streets. Their services include emergency navigation centers, long-term residential programs, children's resource centers, and hunger relief efforts. In 2024, just last year, the San Diego Rescue Mission provided over 95,000 nights of shelter, and they placed 63,000 people of their shelter guests into longer-term care or housing. And they had a total of 331, just about one a day, who ended homelessness permanently. So in addition to those hundreds of thousands of meals, they also provided over 100,000 hours of job training. And the Oceanside Navigation Center is now called the Oceanside Lighthouse. It is the city's first permanent year-round shelter for individuals and families. It operates as a referral-only shelter and provides a safe place to sleep with meals, clothing, necessities, and hygiene facilities. And guests enter a 30-day navigation center where they receive trauma, enforced care, case management and support, and then taking steps towards a stable housing. And many transition to the Mission Academy, a long-term recovery program for men, women, and children. While with the help of other partner agencies and volunteers, guests have access to addiction recovery programs, health services, peer support, and social activities. We need this all over the county. I'm sorry, we need this kind of stuff. So we need multiple San Diego Rescue Missions. But their focus is on moving people into permanent sustainable housing. It offers low barriers to entry, housing-focused programs, and essential services such as meals, showers, and laundry services. And with the help of the partner agencies and volunteers, guests also have access to addiction recovery classes, physical and mental health services, peer support, and social activities. We have an item later here today, ending veterans homelessness, which is worth noting because James here is a success story as a veteran who turned his life around through the San Diego Rescue Mission. So whereas the county of San Diego were committed, oh, here, we'll give you the proclamation. Don, you're going to have to hold this. All right. The county of San Diego is committed to recognizing and honoring those organizations that are dedicated to the best ideals of public service, and San Diego Rescue Mission's Oceanside Lighthouse is one such worthy organization. So now therefore be proclaimed by the members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this sixth day of May 2025, that we commend the San Diego Rescue Mission's Oceanside Lighthouse for its outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to San Diego County citizens, and do hereby declare today to be San Diego Rescue Mission Day throughout San Diego County. Let's give them a hand. Did you want to say a few words?
Well, on behalf of the San Diego Rescue Mission, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors, and especially Supervisor Desmond and his staff for this honor, this recognition. What we do is difficult work, and I've often said that if we were a reality TV show, you all tune in every week to see what's going on down at the mission. It's hard work, and so to have a moment in time, a moment on a particular day to be recognized is an incredible blessing, and we appreciate that so much. The government would tell you that homelessness is primarily a housing issue, and most San Diegans would tell you that homelessness is a drug and alcohol issue. Those are two areas that have to be addressed, but the San Diego Rescue Mission would tell you, and our staff would tell you, that homelessness is actually a heart issue, H-E-A-R-T. And until we address the issues of the heart, which is what we do through our rehab facility and through our triage centers, until we address the issues of the heart, all we're really doing is moving people around. All we're really doing is moving people around. Thank you for that. And so we just decided to change our approach. We've been serving San Diegans for 70 years, long before I got there, long before any of us got there. We've been serving San Diego for 70 years. We started as a soup kitchen in 1955, and it was during COVID that we really believed that God gave us a different approach, that instead of waiting for people to get to us downtown in our 300-bed rehab facility, that we needed to be more active throughout the region, because homelessness is actually a countywide crisis. So we started opening up emergency shelters. Now, we don't call them emergency shelters, because you all don't want an emergency shelter in your neighborhood. We call them lighthouses. But it's at that lighthouse that they get the help that they need to take a positive step forward and out of homelessness. We opened one in Oceanside, 100-bed facility, privately funded, privately funded to operate, and then we opened one in National City, 162-bed, that are both operational as we sit right here. Both those facilities are full. And sometime in 2025, 2026, we have plans to open up a third one out in East County. And so it is an honor and a privilege to be here. Thank you for encouraging us in the work that we do. I just wanted you to hear a statement or two from somebody that's been through our program. He is six years Navy. He spent a year with us going through our rehab facility. He came to us after four years on the street, and he's one of the reasons why we're so proud of what we do. And so James, come on up here. I'd like for you to share with everybody, yeah, James Case.
Good morning, everybody. I'm James.
Your community is super proud of what you've been able to do, and so share with them your biggest takeaway from your 12 months with us.
Well, I'd like to start off first by saying I'm proud to be a veteran. I'm proud that I've served my country, and it's a beautiful thing. When I showed up at the Rescue Mission a little over three years ago, everything I owned was in a shopping cart. And it was, I got a blessing from it right away, because they didn't judge me by the way I looked, they didn't judge me by the color of my skin, they didn't ask me who's going to pay for this, or what insurance do you have, or any of that. All they asked me was, are you sure you're done? And I was sure. At that point, I was sure I was done. But I'm really grateful for that, because I had been to several places before that, and it was like, well, you don't have insurance, you don't have the, you know, where are you going to get the money, who's, whatever. And they didn't ask me none of that. All they asked me was the most important question, which was, are you done? You know, are you ready for some change? And I think about that a lot. But one of the things that I learned while I was at the mission is really how much love there is there. There's volunteers, there's staff, there's all kinds of people involved in making the Rescue Mission work. And I saw it firsthand by being there, and it's amazing. It's amazing what happens when people come together for a common good, you know? And it really touched my heart. It changed my way of looking at life, because when I came there, I was hopeless, I was broken, and I wasn't sure that my life was ever going to get better. I'm an alcoholic and a drug addict, and as of 21st of March this year, I've been cleaning sober from everything for three years.
James Case, you guys, how about that? Great story? So thank you Supervisor Desmond, we appreciate this honor and this recognition very much. God bless you guys.
We now proceed with non-agenda public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on subject matters within the board's jurisdiction, but not an item on the meeting agenda. The only action that the board may take is a referral to the chief administrative officer. Under the board's rules, speakers can only speak once per meeting for non-agenda public communication, either today's general legislative session or tomorrow's land use legislative session, but not both sessions. Speakers may select which session to address the board at their own convenience. To better facilitate the meeting, for non-agenda public comment, we have five speakers in person and five speakers by phone. And to ensure fairness, the first five speakers in person for non-agenda public comment are now being randomly selected. The rest of non-agenda public communication will be heard at the close of today's session. In accordance with board rules, in order to ensure timely completion of today's agenda, for any discussion item with 10 or more speakers, individuals will have one minute to share their opinion. A reminder, according to Rule 4A, members of the public that are non-English speaking and need interpretation assistance will get twice the allotted time. And a final reminder, according to the board's rules of procedures, audience members shall not whistle-clap, stomp feet, or do anything that disrupts the proceedings. If you disrupt the meeting, you will be given one warning. After that one warning, if you disrupt the meeting again, you will be directed to leave the chamber for the remainder of the meeting. Andrew, please call the speakers.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 17 requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, seven in person, and 10 requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers, and we'll now randomly select the first five speakers in person. All the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You'll have two minutes to address the board, and we will ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'd like to invite four of the following individuals, again, the first five. Joanne Balbuena, Adrian Cheprese, allegedly Audra, Megan Erleese, and Oliver Twist. If I've called your name, please come forward.
I'm here today because I want to take a moment to recognize and deeply thank Supervisor Monica Montgomery-Steph for her unwavering commitment to advocating for social equity in the cannabis sector, and not just here in San Diego County, but she goes out her way to bring awareness across the entire state.
Can you please state your name?
Oh, my name is Joanne Balbuena.
Thank you.
So Supervisor Montgomery, she has been a true champion for justice, ensuring that communities most harmed by prohibition are prioritized in this new legal landscape. Her leadership is a reminder that regulation without equity is not true progress. Thanks to her vision and tireless work, we're seeing actionable steps taking place toward repairing generational harm and creating pathways for economic empowerment. Supervisor, your dedication and commitment is changing lives and setting a standard for equity that the rest of the nation can look to. On behalf of so many who have been historically marginalized, thank you very much for leading with integrity, compassion, and action. I appreciate you, thank you. And thanks for everyone else who also does the same.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Blessed greetings. My name is Megan Erleese. I'm a war veteran, community activist, and co-spokesperson for the Roll Up for Equity campaign, and I'm here to offer something we don't say enough in these rooms. Thank you. Thank you to Supervisor Montgomery-Steph. Your leadership reminds us that equity is not a favor, it is a responsibility. You've never let the conversation drift away from the people who need it most. To the full board, thank you for staying engaged. Whether you agree with the program or not, you've stayed in the conversation, and that matters, that shows leadership. And to those who may still be unsure about social equity, I understand. If someone told me a substance I was raised to fear could actually be healing, I'd question it too. But truth has a funny way of outlasting tradition. Social equity isn't about giving people a leg up, it's about finally setting the record straight. So again, thank you Supervisor Montgomery-Steph for holding the line, and thank you to this full board for your continued attention, because at the end of the day, equity benefits us all, not just the communities that have been harmed, but for the county we are trying to build. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sorry, I thought there were people ahead of me. Somebody was going to... No.
Hi, Mary Davis, Oliver Twist here. So I'm here with a formal inquiry about the State of the County address, and I had sent Evan some questions, or Tara Lawson-Reimer's, and Evan had gotten back to me, and I did appreciate the information, but I was not satisfied with it, so I did send a secondary request. I went to go protest the policies. You know, I've been a strong critic about the fiscal policies of this chamber and body, and then I did not like the way I was treated, where I was relegated. I went up top, it's a taxpayer-funded event. They tried to deflect and say it was somehow a subsidized event or private event, but it's a taxpayer-subsidized facility, taxpayer-subsidized event. You had sheriffs there, not private security. I asked if the other two supervisors had been invited, and was told they were some kind of invited to participate, but yet they weren't there. So again, I'd like emails, I want to just play this real quick.
Okay, well, I'm going to go down to the bottom of the steps. I still kind of object to this, because even though it's a private space, and I'll probably be pulling in some public records or talking to like a First Amendment organization about this, because I feel like I should be able, if I'm peaceful and quiet, I should have one little corner. Well, this is a taxpayer-funded, yeah.
I understand your point of view.
Okay.
Where is it exactly?
Well, I'm going down...
At the bottom of the steps, anywhere on that concrete.
Yeah, I will do that. So thank you, deputy, I appreciate it. Okay, thank you, deputy. Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, and just one more message for Tara. Ask her if this is how they treat people where free speech is sacrosanct, because that's what she had said, that free speech was sacrosanct. And relegating me to the bottom of the stairs is very one-ish, so if you could pass that along to her, okay? Okay, thank you very much.
And then I work my way down to the timeout quarter, so please rethink that. It was a public event funded by taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Final call for Adrian Cheprese and allegedly Audra.
Thank you so much.
Why can't I do it again? Why can't you let somebody else go?
We randomly selected the first five individuals, you were part of that group, so if you've called your name, please come forward.
I mean, that's a bit ridiculous, because what if somebody needs to leave and you don't want to wait till the end of the meeting? I mean, you're just like, that's so ridiculous, especially...
Can I just pause on that? Thank you, Audra. You've asked a question of why we moved to randomly selecting. That was actually as a result of people's feedback. People said that they felt like it was a little bit unfair, it felt like a little bit of a race of who got to speak, so that's why we went to the random selection process. So if you don't like it, go ahead and you can tell me, we can take it under advisement, but I just want to let you know that was in response to people's feedback.
But what I'm saying is like, if I want to have somebody else go, since there's two other people that could take my place and I could go at the end, I feel like that should be something that I should be able to do, to provide somebody the opportunity to get theirs out of the way now.
So your basic proposal is that you want to be able to be considerate of other people and allow them to go?
I do.
If you would like to, if you're able to stay later?
Yes.
Okay, we can take that under advisement. Andrew, we can chat and see if there's a way to incorporate that, so thank you for the feedback.
But you can't do that arbitrarily, you just decide.
Correct.
Right, figures. See, he's, what about him? He could go. Can he go?
Audra, it's your turn. You were drawn in the lottery to go first.
I didn't win money. I mean, if it was money, maybe that would be different.
There are many, 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 many pedophiles running around. Yeah. And until you've been affected by one, you won't even know what that's like to think about, to think about children being abused on a daily basis, and the county is complicit in it, especially Claudia, sitting there defending the people that are ripping families apart. It's disgusting. And you guys get paid to do it. You take our money, and you use it for that, and you don't do a damn thing about it. It's fucked up.
Next speaker, please. Adrian Cheeprace. Not seeing any movement in the chamber. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. We'll start with our first caller. Again, in accordance with the board's rules, we'll be hearing from the first five callers. The remaining callers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. We'll begin with our first caller.
Barbara Gordon.
Please go ahead, Barbara.
As a public health educator, understanding how substance use affects our mental health is vital. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Mental health is as important at every stage of life, from childhood through adulthood. This month is an opportunity to bring awareness to the relationship between drug use and mental health challenges, particularly those associated with marijuana use. The overwhelming census from mental health professionals that marijuana is not helpful with people with mental illness. Using marijuana can directly worsen symptoms of anxiety, depression, or schizophrenia through its action on the brain. The relationship between marijuana and psychotic illness, specifically schizophrenia, has been studied for many years. But as we have normalized and commercialized the use of marijuana, it has greatly decreased the perception of the harm and risk of marijuana use. Marijuana is advertised to reduce stress, anxiety, and other mental health conditions. I would urge this council to consider the relationship between marijuana use and good mental health. The question that needs to be asked is, will marijuana help this county seek long-term solutions to problems related to addiction, homelessness, which are all injured-related? Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
All aboard. Last meeting, there were 21 items. Four of them were deferred to Wednesday. This has happened at least three other meetings recently. It's like a bad habit. If people know what items are when, they can plan their time to be here or to speak online better. Remember that most people work, shop, or have kids. Not everyone can be here or even speak online at the drop of a hat. In the future, I suggest that if there are more than 17 items, please consider deferring some of the items before the final agenda, and please also adjust the online agenda and registration for speaking so that people have more time to plan. Next, I noticed that my voter ID number is on nailed election materials, nail and ballot voting information, et cetera. Anyone could see this information and separate it out or throw it in the garbage. Therefore, it is considered confidential. Government Code Section 7924 says, except as provided, in another section of the Elections Code, both of the following are confidential and shall not be disclosed to any person, home address, telephone number, email address, precinct number, or other numbers specified by the Secretary of State for the voter registration process. So please do not include confidential information on the outside of the USPS or public visible mailing. The good news is that in the last election, I notified the ROV, and she excluded this number. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Con Twolo here. So amen to Audra. There is one thing for sure being done about the children being abused under the county's custody. A bunch of slimy liars are jumping on that bandwagon to represent the victims. That's for sure. And the dam, okay, so here we go. This is what I wanted to say. The dam's about to give. Isn't it funny how Hollywood movies, the ones, you know, they try to portray the ones who are trying to warn the others about something catastrophic that's about to happen, they're portrayed as crazy, and that's all on purpose. In a world full of propaganda, truth is always a crazy conspiracy, yet almost 100% of the time, their warnings were not in vain. Again, all on purpose. Wake up, sleepy ones. You, the ones tuned in to mainstream media, being fed what to believe, who to hate, what to fear, the ones sold on big government being the answer, the ones who are good little obedient return customers to their Rockefeller-trained doctors, doctors who will never cure you but keep you on those never-ending prescriptions of synthetic drugs made in labs. Note, Big Pharma is the biggest pressure of addictive drugs, not your local pot shop. Nature is not the enemy. It's just a backwards system, I swear. Like the people asking for our law enforcement to be defunded at yesterday's San Diego City Council. It's so backwards, because it was from the same demographic, who's always calling the cops for help, and they complain. And then they have the nerve to complain about how long it took the cops, or if the cops even showed up at all. And so I just, I reminded them that when shit hits the fan, they're not going to be calling for their local librarian to help, but they're going to need the cops, right? It's just manufactured chaos, is what I said, and that is what in fact is happening.
Now hear from the next caller.
Good morning, Peggy Walker. As mentioned, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and I thank you for the opportunity to address the critical topic of the effects of marijuana on mental health. As the county continues to navigate the evolving landscape of marijuana use, it's really imperative to ground policies in science. There's well-documented scientific links between marijuana use and mental health disorders that warrant your careful consideration. Studies, including those from the National Institute on Drug Abuse, show regular use is associated with impaired memory, reduced attention span, lower IQ, and dependency. These effects hinder academic performance and long-term career prospects. That does not bode well for the small business climate we just celebrated earlier in today's proclamations. Repeated studies show high potency marijuana, widely available in dispensaries, amplifies mental health risks, including addiction, but also anxiety, depression, suicide ideation, psychosis, and schizophrenia. If you are unaware of marijuana-induced psychotic breaks, you should be. They can be violent and even result in fatalities. Us policymakers, you have the sole power to shape this county's approach to marijuana in ways that protect youth and community mental health. Please familiarize yourself with the scientific evidence related to marijuana's adverse impact on marijuana health, especially to those under 25. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Now hear from the final caller this morning.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Anne Riddle here. I came this morning because so many of our cities, including, of course, our county, are looking at their budgets. And an interest of mine is the City of San Diego's internship program, and I wonder if this wouldn't be something really wise for our county to consider. It's an opportunity to help those who are young adults, who are trying to make those decisions of college and employment, and it is a difficult, confusing, expensive, demanding journey for them. This would be a grand opportunity, especially for those who are low-income, who felt that they've been discriminated by the justice system, or transitioning for foster care, or who have mental health and substance abuse treatment, to have these extra opportunities to grow into a job that the county could provide internship for them. I'd like to recommend it as a real way to give people a leg up. Offering a pot shop doesn't help anybody, not them and not the people around them, but an opportunity to participate in a county-run internship program, that's the way to go. And there already seems to be from the City of San Diego, evidence of the 1,300 young adults they've helped has been really significant. Let's take a look at that model and do that for our young adults who need this opportunity now. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes our request for non-agenda public communication this morning. Again, all the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes and statements of proceedings for the sessions of April 22nd and April 23rd, and the San Diego County Fire Protection District meeting of April 22nd. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? We have a motion by Supervisor Anderson. Is there a second? Supervisor Montgomery-Steph, thank you. Andrew, please call the vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, we now proceed with the formation of the consent agenda, items 1 through 10. All items on the consent agenda are routine and will be acted upon with one motion. Individuals will be able to comment on the consent agenda after the supervisors pull the items they would like for discussion. Would any of my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion or have comments on the items on the consent agenda?
Not this time.
Okay, Supervisor Anderson, Supervisor Montgomery-Steph.
No need to pull any items, just quick comments on item number nine. I'm happy to nominate Paul Houston to the Committee for Persons with Disabilities. Paul is the lead counselor at Acadia Healthcare in the Comprehensive Treatment Center. He has more than 10 years of experience in the behavioral health industry, including working as a program manager and as a criminal justice training facilitator. Paul sits on the Deacon Board, the Southeast Alano Club, and the Cali Strong Advisory Board. I want to thank Paul for his service, and I know he'll bring a valuable perspective to this commission. And with that, I will move the consent agenda if you don't already have it.
We do not have a motion.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Great. Supervisor Desmond?
No items to pull and no comments, I'll second the motion.
We have a second by Supervisor Desmond. I do have a couple of comments, nothing to pull. Just on item six, which is the authorization to receive the Community Action Plan, just want to note that this is essentially a vote to accept $3.5 million in community service block grant funds, and this is money that's zeroed out in the Trump administration's skinny budget that was released on Friday. So hopefully, that doesn't happen, but if it does, this will be our last year with our community block grants, which would be really, really sad. And similarly, I'd like to point out, just on item seven, this is an item to approve the appointment of Nilsa Higgins as the tenant commissioner for the Housing Authority of the County of San Diego, and she's a senior living on Section 8. Again, this is a program that's funded by federal dollars, this in the budget that the president released on Friday. There's a 44% cut proposed, Housing and Urban Development to HUD, that's primarily Section 8 housing vouchers. So if this is to pass, we will see a 40% cut in our housing vouchers. You know, we already know we're doing way less than I think is needed for our county and for the folks who are in need in our community, but that would cut our housing vouchers from approximately 10,500 households that we support now to, down to around 6,000 households. So again, hopeful that that budget does not pass, but I do think it's important, as we kind of go through the regular business, and the consent agenda sometimes seems very routine, to take a moment and just understand what's at stake, what's going on underneath the surface of these items that sometimes we don't fully take time to unpack and draw a connection between the budgets that are being discussed in Washington, and what that will really mean for our community in terms of really essential services like access to housing. So, thank you. We can go ahead to public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have nine requests to speak on items on the consent agenda, one in person and eight requesting to speak by phone. Any individuals that requested to speak on items on the consent agenda by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speaker. You'll have two minutes to address the board. I'd like to invite forward allegedly Audra.
I just knew it was me. How could you figure that? My person uses the name Audra. So you guys sit here and you want to give people pay raises for not doing their job, and then bring the fees down onto the people so that you can get full cost recovery for not providing anything. But it's interesting when you're talking about jail reentry and like using psychosocial intervention, right? We got to change people's behaviors and all that kind of stuff, you know, and, you know, integration of social factors and individual thought and behavior. It's really disturbing to think about people who have behavioral health issues, like all of you guys, really sitting there telling people how they need to be to be, just like children, right? As long as we sexualize them in school, hey, that's cool, because then a predator can come up and just, you know, rape them, because they'll be like, it probably feels good. So yeah, as long as we do that, and then maybe they'll be trafficked as well, but hey, Jim, you got your little trafficking org, right? And so you could probably save them, probably, right? Or not at all, or just continue the abuses. And then you guys wonder, you always want to blame Trump. Oh my gosh, it's Trump's fault. It's Trump's fault that all this money is going away. No, it's your guys' choices that you have made. You're failing miserably at providing housing for people, at helping homelessness, and you wonder why, because it's a racket. So if you were actually doing something with all the millions and billions of dollars that you get from the hard-working people, maybe there would be proof that it shows that you're making things better. But it's like, day by day, it gets worse, no matter how much money you guys get. It's pretty funny, and then it's like, you fill your pockets with it for the rackets that you're doing, right? With summer stuff, and Jim? Yeah. And, you know, just with the medical services, it's like, we already pay for these things, and then we just got to keep paying for them again. And then if you're doing some kind of phased-in approach, what happens when a year from now, you ask us for more money? Because that's what's going to happen. You want to get people raises and increase the fees. Good job. You guys are doing very well at destroying everything.
Thank you. Now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. Again, as a reminder for the callers, please identify which items on the consent agenda you are speaking about. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. We will begin with our first caller.
All aboard. Good job, Audra. Nilsa Higgins flooded for the gateway to California nonsense and the stingy polluted River, Tijuana River Valley, a total waste of money. Please reject this appointment. Fees for emergency...
We have nine requests to speak on items on the consent agenda, one in person and eight requesting to speak by phone. Any individuals that requested to speak on items on the consent agenda by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speaker. You'll have two minutes to address the board. I'd like to invite forward allegedly Audra.
I just knew it was me. How could you figure that? My person uses the name Audra. So you guys sit here and you want to give people pay raises for not doing their job and then bring the fees down onto the people so that you can get full cost recovery for not providing anything. But it's interesting when you're talking about jail reentry and like using psychosocial intervention, right? We got to change people's behaviors and all that kind of stuff, you know? You know, integration of social factors and individual thought and behavior. It's really disturbing to think about people who have behavioral health issues, like all of you guys, really sitting there telling people how they need to be to be, just like children, right? As long as we sexualize them in school, hey, that's cool, because then a predator can come up and just, you know, rape them, because they'll be like, it probably feels good. So, yeah, as long as we do that. And then maybe they'll be trafficked as well. But, hey, Jim, you got your little trafficking org, right? And so you could probably save them, probably, right? Or not at all, or just continue the abuses. And then you guys wonder, you always want to blame Trump. Oh, my gosh, it's Trump's fault. It's Trump's fault that all this money is going away. No, it's your guys' choices that you have made. You're failing miserably at providing housing for people, at helping homelessness, and you wonder why? Because it's a racket. So if you were actually doing something with all the millions and billions of dollars that you get from the hard-working people, maybe there would be proof that it shows that you're making things better. But it's like, day by day, it gets worse, no matter how much money you guys get. It's pretty funny. And then it's like, you fill your pockets with it for the rackets that you're doing, right? With summer steven, Jim? Yeah. And, you know, just with the medical services, it's like, we already pay for these things, and then we just got to keep paying for them again. And then if you're doing some kind of phased-in approach, what happens when a year from now you ask us for more money? Because that's what's going to happen. You want to get people raises and increase the fees. Good job. You guys are doing very well at destroying everything.
Thank you. Now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. Again, as a reminder for the callers, please identify which items on the consent agenda you are speaking about. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. We will begin with our first caller.
Paul the Bold. Good job, Audra. Nilsa Higgins flooded for the gateway to California nonsense in the stinky polluted River Tijuana River Valley? A total waste of money. Please reject this appointment. Fees for emergency medical services. Raising fees between 18 and 230% when the inflation rate is about 3% is grossly inflationary. You call us a phased approach? I call it a way to keep poor people from building in the unincorporated areas. Ambulance transfer fees at $3,743 plus $0.48 per mile for a few well-do areas sounds like a soaks rich cost recovery for services which are used by rich and poor alike is not a good thing and not what the government should be about. Actions related to the Community Action Plan? Is the Community Action Plan a list or just a plan or just a resource list? I did not see much of a real plan. Questions, or have an actual plan? Things like identifying food needs under health before healthcare is even mentioned make me wonder at the accuracy of the data. Having only 100 people in the community dialogue session? The agency did not apparently interview local leaders, board members, or clients individually, or better answers and more detailed explanations could be gathered than in a group setting. Do they really care what the public thinks? Clarifying language?
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
No, no, they do not care what the public thinks or says, because if they did, then the clerk would interrupt and say, hey, jump in, you're not coming through this, you know, the phone call, we can't hear you, we can't make out what you're saying. But no, they don't care. So I'm going to just repeat what Paul the Bold mentioned regarding actions related to 2026 and 27.
Please take a minute.
Is the Community Action Plan a plan or just a resource list? I did not see much of a real plan, as usual. Mostly responses to questions rather than actual plans. Things like identifying food needs under health before healthcare is mentioned make me wonder at the accuracy of the data. Data, whatever. Having only 195 people in the community dialogue sessions is outrageous. And the agency did not apparently interview local leaders, board members, or clients individually. Where better answers and more detailed explanations can be gathered than in a group setting? Do they really care about the public, what the public thinks? No, no, no. Clarifying language for a clear democratic selection process for the representatives of the low-income sector will probably be a great help to get a clear plan. Sheriff's agreement with Delmar Fair and Race Track owners. The sheriff and deputy serve the Delmar Fairgrounds from the Encinitas office. Not sure whether it would be faster in an emergency, like transport to hospital or gunman on the loose needing police reinforcements, to have the Delmar or Solana Beach police involved, since there's no contract attached. I can't tell you you need more than just a renewal. I can't tell you if you need more than just a renewal. Let's see, five. Older adult services revenue agreements and grants.
Thank you. For the record, that speaker was Consuelo. Now hear from the next caller.
Hi, good morning. My name is Madison, and I'm here to speak in support of item five, which authorizes acceptance of revenue agreements and grants for older adult services and supports future funding opportunities for programs that serve both older adults and persons with disabilities. As our senior population grows, so do their needs. And one emerging public health concern is the increasing use of cannabis among older adults. While some seniors may turn to cannabis for pain management or sleep, they often do so without adequate medical guidance, leading to unintended consequences. Emergency departments across the county are reporting a sharp rise in cannabis-related incidents among seniors, including falls, confusion, and dangerous interactions with prescription medications. Older adults often metabolize substances differently, and without education and monitoring, what's meant for relief can lead to harm. This funding can expand services that promote safe, healthy aging, including outreach education, case management, and behavioral health support. It also provides a path to integrate cannabis-related education into broader wellness programming for seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Becky Rapp, and I'd like to speak to item number eight. This item is about approving conflict of interest codes, which are essential for protecting transparency and preventing undue industry influence in government. I'd like to raise a concern regarding Dallin Young, Supervisor Anderson's new director of policy. Mr. Young has a documented history as a lobbyist for the marijuana industry advocating for expanded retail permits and relaxing regulations. Now, as a key policy advisor, he has the power to influence marijuana policy in unincorporated areas. Given his past work, there's a clear conflict of interest between the public's interests and the private interests he previously represented. This is especially concerning, given that Supervisor Anderson has continued to push the marijuana market into these areas despite the clear opposition of unincorporated planning groups. I urge this board to consider this conflict as you review the conflict of interest codes, ensuring the ethical safeguards are in place to protect the public decision-making from industry influences. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the final caller.
Hey, how you guys doing? Fine and lovely, lovely day. I want to go ahead and further illustrate the two things that Karen Lawson Reamer wanted to go ahead and point out, is that funding is going to be cut. And they're not going to be able to fund the certificates to the illegal criminal migrants that came through. Hasn't anyone ever sat there and wondered why you see citizens on the streets next to a border state? I mean, border, right next to the border. Citizens are on the street, not criminal migrants. Criminal migrants get a ticket, pass track, right into housing. The new housing that they're building, that is why we are one of the number one, one of the move-out cities. Yet we need more housing, because they need to provide housing for people that aren't citizens of the United States. Flat out. Ain't that true? And because citizens that are on the streets, their ballots can be stolen very easily. It's a win-win for all four of them. That is why they prefer to kick Americans on the street and house criminal migrants. That is all four of these board members. Because in all four areas, they have handed out certs to criminal migrants instead of citizens. That is the truth. That is why they're not even going to say one fucking thing about this. Ain't that right? You're upset you cannot house criminal migrants anymore.
Thank you. And for the record, that speaker was Gambler. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item, the consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you so much. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. So let me just first preview our order of business today. We're going to begin with a couple of items that we were asked to have as time certain. We have item 22, and then, sorry, item 20, and then item 22. Is that correct, Andrew? Item 20 and then item 22. Okay, great. And then after that, we'll run through the agenda in order. And our plan here, and this is for my colleagues as well as to the public, we need to adjourn for closed session at approximately five. So if we don't make it through all of our items before five, those items will be held over till tomorrow. Okay? So let's begin with item 20. This is the Public Hearing in Compliance with Assembly Bill 2561. This is codified in Government Code Section 3502.3 regarding San Diego County vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts. So I first will hand it over to staff for a 10-minute presentation. Then, in accordance with the way that the bill is structured, every labor union at our county has an opportunity to also make a 10-minute presentation on this item. So we'll have the county presentation, and then if any of our labor unions who are here will also have the opportunity to make a 10-minute presentation. Then we will have, do we have public comment after that? Then we have public comment, and then we'll have a discussion among my colleagues. Okay? Please, team.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer and members of the board. My name is Susan Brazo, and I am the Director of Human Resources. As the vice chair stated, we're here today to present the status of vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts for the County of San Diego as required by Assembly Bill 2561. This bill was signed by the governor in September of 2024 and enacted in January of this year. This bill requires public agencies to present the vacancy rates by bargaining unit, recruitment strategies, and retention efforts once per fiscal year prior to the adoption of the budget, and allows employee organizations to make a presentation to the board. We have provided each of our labor partners with their respective vacancy rates prior to this meeting. And finally, AB 2561 requires where applicable, that the county provides specific detailed data if the vacancy rate exceeds 20% within a single bargaining unit. Noting here that no county bargaining unit meets this threshold. This bill was enacted due to concerns that high job vacancies could impact public service delivery and the potential for workers to be required to handle heavier workloads. This can lead to burnout and increased turnover, which potentially further exasperates staffing challenges. Finally, the bill allows for an opportunity to work in collaboration with our labor partners to address concerns and develop strategies. I will now turn the presentation over to the Assistant Director of Human Resources, Brandy Winterbottom.
Thank you, Susan. Today I will be sharing vacancy, recruitment, and retention data for the period of March 7th, 2024 to March 7th, 2025. The county has 20,477 budgeted positions with 19,251 employees. At its peak in July of 2022, the county's vacancy rate was nearly 20%. The Department of Human Resources and hiring departments worked diligently to reduce the vacancies to their lowest point of 6% currently, with just over 1,200 vacant positions. During this same period, the Department of Human Resources accepted applications for 706 recruitments, receiving over 82,000 job applications. Nearly 1,700 new employees were hired into the organization, and just over 2,500 county employees were promoted. The county has nine employee organizations representing about 17,000 employees that are listed here on this slide. Within those nine employee organizations, we have 25 individual bargaining units. The next three slides will show a breakdown of vacant positions by employee organization and bargaining unit. This first slide shows the vacancies for SEIU and its 10 individual bargaining units. This slide shows the vacancies for the following employee organizations. The District Attorney Investigators Association, the Deputy District Attorney Association, the Deputy Sheriffs Association, the Public Defender Association, the Probation Officers Association, and the Supervising Probation Officers Association. The last slide in this series shows the vacancy rates for the Deputy County Council's Association, Teamsters Local 911, and the unrepresented employees in the county. As Susan mentioned, there is no single bargaining unit with a vacancy rate that exceeds 20%. We do have pockets of challenge in recruiting and hiring for specific job classifications that we'll discuss later in the presentation. We work diligently to hire qualified staff to reduce vacancies by creating a toolbox of versatile strategies, since a one-size approach doesn't necessarily fit all needs. The Central Department of Human Resources works collaboratively with each of the four group human resources directors to identify any recruitment challenges and to explore strategies to increase applicants. We engage community by attending public outreach events and job fairs. During this period, we attended 98 events, including 39 that were veteran-focused. We maximize efficiencies for our candidates by hosting same-day hiring events, where hiring departments can make job offers at the time of interviews, and candidates can immediately start the background process, which significantly reduces the amount of time to bring staff onboard. We held 43 events and hired 404 candidates at same-day hiring events. Your board previously authorized hiring incentives to help mitigate areas of challenge in hard-to-recruit positions, including the lateral incentive program, which offered incentive pay to 49 deputy sheriffs who were hired from other public agencies, a compensation bonus to 275 newly hired engineers, deputy medical examiners, and deputy probation officers, an employee referral bonus to county employees who referred candidates that were hired into hard-to-recruit jobs, such as engineers, nurses, and licensed behavioral health positions, and enhanced relocation payments were made to 39 deputy sheriff and deputy probation In addition, several classification premiums were approved, including a 5% compensation premium for engineers who possess a professional engineer license to help with retention, a 5% night shift premium for deputy sheriffs, a 10% location premium for nurses and clinicians who work in detention facilities, and flexibility for departments to hire at the top step for hard-to-recruit classifications. All of these are tools and strategies that the county has used to help manage our vacancy rates. Next, we will discuss retention. The Gallup Organization recommends that successful organizations target a retention rate of 90% or higher. This slide shows the county's year-over-year retention rate at 92%. A skilled and diverse workforce is the foundation of providing services to the community served in San Diego and creating a sense of belonging for our employees as at the forefront of county culture. Key elements to increasing retention of the county workforce include offering career paths and training opportunities so employees have a career ladder and opportunities for growth in the organization, leveraging teleworking and alternate work schedules to ensure employees have optimal work-life balance where feasible, and engaging with employees directly about how to make improvements to the organization. It's important to note that some turnover is healthy to allow organizations to progress by bringing together diverse perspectives, new skill sets, and supporting career growth While the overall vacancy and retention rates have been positive, the county is not immune to recruiting and hiring challenges in industries that are experiencing national labor shortages, including engineering, nursing, medical examiners, licensed behavioral health professionals, and sworn public safety professionals. We recognize the challenges in filling these critical roles and remain committed to innovative and proactive strategies in collaboration with hiring departments. Ongoing efforts include expanding outreach, leveraging relationships with schools that produce professionals in these industries, collaboration with professional membership organizations, resume searches in national databases, and bringing forth compensation adjustment requests as necessary throughout the fiscal year. I'll turn it back over to Susan to conclude the presentation.
Thank you, Brandy. The county has made significant strides in its efforts to fill vacant positions and to recruit and retain a skilled, diverse, and engaged workforce while recognizing we still have challenges. In the upcoming fiscal year, each county operational group will take measured steps to monitor vacancies and will implement strategies to ensure core services are delivered to the public. We will also work to ensure that if there are areas with high vacancy rates, that we are not putting heavier workloads on our employees. I'd like to thank each of our departments and group HR directors for their partnership in helping to improve hiring efficiencies throughout the organization. Today, we are asking the board to accept our first presentation under AB 2561. Today, we are asking the board to accept our first presentation under AB 2561, and subject to your question, that concludes our presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before we have a board conversation, we will go to group presentations from our labor unions.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reimer. We have one request for a group presentation. Again, these individuals will have 10 minutes to address the board. All members of the group must speak during that 10 minutes. I'll ask you to please self-regulate your time with the timer on the podium. I'd like to invite forward the following individuals: Nate Wallman, Bob Prokesh, Robert Pitt, and Jerrell Howard. If I've called your name, please come forward, and I'll ask you to each, please state your name at the podium.
We have slides.
So, if each individual can come forward and state their name at the podium, just to confirm that you're here.
Nate Wallman, Vice President, SEIU Local 221.
Please.
Jerrell Howard.
Thank you.
Bob Prokesh.
Thank you.
Robert Pitt.
And as you're getting started, just another reminder, each person in the group may speak for no more than four minutes under the board's rules.
Thank you. Good morning, supervisors. My name is Nate Wallman, and I am Vice President of SEIU Local 221 and a former county employee. SEIU 221 and SEIU California worked hard to ensure that Assembly Bill 2561 was passed in Sacramento since we know that strong recruitment and retention leads to quality public services. This is because, according to this study by the UC Berkeley Labor Center, in the last few years, municipalities across the state have been compromised by vacancies and turnover, including in years past here in San Diego County. Data provided by San Diego County for this study showed that the median tenure of many classes of employees, primarily in the social services, has declined rapidly, and that turnover has escalated as high as 25% in those sectors as a result. In these charts, we see one of the largest groups of employees, human services specialists, as an example of what the study found. Moreover, in the long term, the vacancies and turnover here in San Diego County seem to be part of a past practice of underestimating revenue and overestimating expenses by including positions in the budget that would never fully be filled, challenging our workforce and cheapening our services, unfortunately. This suggests how the county reserves may have grown over the years. These are reserves that we could have spent then but absolutely must spend now due to the threats we're facing to public funding. We know there will be a discussion about the reserves, and opening up the reserves can minimize the elimination of any positions as proposed. We also recognize that fewer positions will lead to fewer vacancies. But wherever the budget lands, it's time to be clear about the impact on the workforce and community when positions are unfilled. Instead of putting -- sorry. Instead of putting money into reserves, the budget should be adjusted quarterly to invest the unspent money into supporting quality services and staffing adjustments. What the threats we're facing is even more crucial than in past years, that we fill county positions with dedicated public servants and ensure that they stay to pull county residents through these challenges. And today, you will be hearing from a few current county employees who will share a little more about their experience with recruitment and retention at their work sites and how it affects the services we provide. First, I'd like to bring up Protective Services Supervisor Bob Prokesh.
Hello. My name is Bob Prokesh, 28-year employee of the County of San Diego in Office of Child Safety and proud member of SEIU 221. One of the main recurring themes we have discussed with each of the board supervisors individually and throughout this last year is recruitment and retention. The county recognizes this in many ways. One of them is by mentioning normal staff turnover 39 times in our budget. Our operational plan calls on us to invest in our workforce, and our county mission calls out the need for skilled and supported workforce. Well, we need more support. Here in HHSA, there are 2,700 county employees in the social work residential career path. This makes up more than 25% of HHSA employees. Supervisor Anderson was just present last week for our child abuse prevention pinwheel ceremony, where Director Guadado, CFWB, spoke of the need for the county to increase protection for our most vulnerable citizens. The Office of Child Safety receives abuse reports on 68,000 children, and our staff are responsible for investigating 36,000 of those children and building safety nets for them by interviewing parents, relatives, neighbors, teachers, and law enforcement. We have consulted all of you about the dangers of vacancies and turnovers as a persistent theme and challenge in this field. Social workers in San Diego County experience both direct and indirect trauma in the field from violence, working in drug and gang homes, residential facilities, and experiencing secondary trauma dealing with and serving families of sexual abuse, seriously abused children and seniors, and sometimes even fatalities. To add fuel to the fire of turnover liabilities, the employees of the most expensive city in the United States continue to be compensated at the bottom 25% of the rest of the state, not to mention the travesty of tier D retirement, just another nail in the retention coffin. When those safety nets, our staff quit or transfer, that leaves the most vulnerable citizens without safety, and that's when quality services suffer, risk to citizens increase, and a liability to the county can occur. We need a robust budget that will help us to attract and retain dedicated employees who care enough to serve our communities and be compensated accordingly. Freeing up the county reserves ensures that we can continue to provide quality services to our community and retain our dedicated staff. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Robert Pitt. I'm a child support officer with the county, have been for more than 23 years. We're here to speak about recruitment and retention. I don't think recruitment for the County of San Diego is a problem. The County of San Diego is an excellent employer. You draw people from all across the United States to come to work here. Okay? That's not the issue. The issue is retention. Specifically, I'd like to speak to you about my department, the Department of Child Support Services. It's like we should install a turnstile and rather than have a door, because people come in and out and leave. They come in, they don't like the training, they don't receive the training, they don't have the income that they need to stay in that position, because it is a difficult position. Child support is very convoluted, very complex, and it takes the average person two to three years to become what I consider, and most professionals consider, to be fully competent. They can be competent at a lower level, but they need the time to develop the full competency. That's the retention issue. The retention comes from proper compensation. Child support officers in the state of California are compensated less than the 20th level of child support officers, meaning there's 20 other counties that pay more for their child support officers doing the exact same job that I do. And it has to be the exact same job, because that's mandated by the state and federal governments. I would request that this board consider utilizing a portion of the reserves and dedicate that towards increasing salaries for all county employees, not just child support officers, but all county employees. And why that? Why would I say that? Because increasing the budget and increasing tapping into those reserves, making more money available, doesn't just help the county, your county, I'm county, it helps the community and your community and I'm community. It helps everyone. I've seen it in the past when the board has opened up the reserves, and they've made expenditures, and those expenditures benefited people and the community, both in and out of county employment. So, I'm calling upon you to consider that. Look at tapping the reserves in a judicial manner, but at the same time, keeping in mind the benefits that it can bestow on county employees, such as frontline staff. Thank you very much.
Next slide, please.
Hello, board of supervisors. My name is Jerrell Howard, 12-year self-sufficiency service eligibility worker, a member of SEIU 221, active member, and steward. First, thank you for accepting our presentation today. As you have heard from my coworkers, union members, we are passionate about recruitment and retention for all county departments. We, the workers, are the foundation of the county. We are who the community see and hear from when they are in need. We are working hours over hours to get the work done in order for service, in order for the service be provided to the people timely. The workers you have now are assigned 16 hours of work to do at eight. The need to recruit and retain caring, dedicated people to serve the community is key to the success of San Diego County. Do not continue to overwork us. Fill the vacancies. Stop the turnover because of poor pay, bad retirement, horrible work environment, bullying, unsafe work areas, poor training, no support in many departments. It is time for an honest budget, so we ask that you change the policy of the reserves to ensure the item, this item, is to be filled, is to be, I'm sorry, this item is to be open and fill the open positions. Thank you again for accepting our presentation on SB 2561.
That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
I know you all are enthusiastic, but let's not clap. Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, so, yeah, so now we will have individual public comment. We don't have any additional unions who have a presentation? Okay. Okay, great. We will go to individual public comments, and then we'll have a board conversation. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reimer. We have 12 total requests to speak on this item, seven in person, including the groups, the individuals that spoke under the group presentation, as well as five requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received two e-commerce, both in opposition. Any individuals that requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the individual in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you'll have one minute to address the board. I'd like to invite forward allegedly Audra, Eileen Bratton, and Brian Lafferty. If I've called your name, please come forward. I'm asking you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record.
My person uses the name Audra. This is absolutely ridiculous. You guys are hiring pedophiles to work with children, the Polanski Center. And children are being ripped apart by people that work in here. Those 36,000 child interviews, children are being taken from their families and alienated from them and then adopted out. After 15 months, Bill Clinton put this into law, that your kids get adopted out after they take them. So, until you guys quit hiring pedophiles, shut the Polanski Center down. You should not be hiring anybody, because you can't be trusted. It's appalling. And you talk about children like they matter. No, you just want to continue the abuse. You're supposed to protect them and like, what's this, child abuse prevention? You mean perpetuation? Until you guys address what the fuck is going on, holy shit.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Brian Lafferty. I've worked for the medical examiner, and I'm a proud member of SEIU Local 221. So, I've been with the county 12 years. I know of life before our current contract, which lifted many employees out of poverty. And before our current contract, I had far too many coworkers leave the county because it was too, it paid too little for them to feed their families and have a roof over their heads. But ever since we have our current contract, our foundational contract, that has not happened a lot. That has just decreased dramatically. So, if you really, if you want to retain, if you really want to keep retaining employees, you need to give us a contract with wages and benefits commensurate with the cost of living in San Diego County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Eileen Bratton, county worker for almost 26 years, and I work for BHS now. I want to just talk about how long it takes to hire. We, in BHS particularly, have to hire almost every position on step five, because we cannot start at step one and have people take that job. And the last time we hired a program manager, the last two program managers, well, actually three, took over a year to get. And we had to send one to a different program for a while, because they lost their program manager before they could actually come to us for like a year. So, it's really a hard-to-hire position, as well as the licensed clinicians, all on step five, all taking a long time to hire. We had to do two in-seat promotions and wait till they got licensed, because we couldn't hire anybody from outside. So, there's a lot of positions that need to be looked at in terms of retention and the wages that they are making in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We will begin with our first caller.
A 6% vacancy rate is good, but emergency services need to be staffed first. Too much emphasis on compensation. Maybe your new hires don't need a premium, just better working conditions, like guaranteed no work pressure, you understaffing, or volunteers. You seem to have a lot of volunteer speakers. And fire the bullies. The equity statement says that equity is central in effort to attract and retain an engaged workforce. I don't agree. People are people. Some actually dislike being treated specially. Many have other things to do than worry about their color, race, disability, or other equity thing. And if they do, they're probably not that engaged in their work. Employees should be hired on their individual merit.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Let's see, so to the SEIU presentation people, you all do realize everything you mentioned. Your entire presentation is a result of government incompetence and inadequacies. They already know. They know. It's all part of the bigger plan. It's what they, it's what they're paid to perpetuate, manufacture chaos. So, I suggest you wake up and smell the New World Order. You will own nothing, not even your thoughts, and be happy. That's Mr. Klaus Schwab saying that. So, yeah, I just suggest you unplug your TVs, get off social media, detox from whatever prescription drugs you may be on. They're designed to keep you docile and submissive. Many of these public servants have been programmed groomed since childhood to believe that they are, in fact, doing a good job. What is key to the success of not only our county, but our world, is that--
Thank you. On to the next caller, and I'll remind this caller, please state your name for the audio record.
With my ass. Okay. I want to go ahead and discuss your rules, Tara. Your rules say that you have to go ahead and give you a heads-up on any 10-minute presentation. Yet, you get rid of all those rules, and you allow any union, union, not the people, to do a 10-minute presentation without getting it pre-approved.
Can you please pause his time? I just want to clarify that this, there's a state law, and we are holding public hearings in compliance with state law. This is Assembly Bill 2561, which is codified in Government Section 3502.3. That is what this hearing is today.
I understand that, but you have a rule where you need to be approved 10 minutes. If you want a 10-minute presentation, which I've been trying to do for the past three years--
Please pause his time again.
--and I've been begging and asking--
Please pause his time again.
--any possible way to do a 10-minute presentation.
He's, okay. Sir, please comment on the content of this item. I've already addressed--
I am. I'm--
Okay, if you stay off topic, your time is going to be forfeited.
I'm making a comment on the fact that you are changing your own rules.
Okay, you can go ahead and forfeit his time.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reimer. That concludes public comment on this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any of my colleagues have any comments? No?
Well, actually, I was glad to see the retention rates were in the 90 percentiles for most departments or near most unions, so it's good to see. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else have comments? No? No, I have a couple of comments. I just want to say, you know, I think continuing to improve our recruitment and retention has to be one of our central priorities at this county. You know, we have folks who work incredibly hard every single day to provide services to our community. And you can't do your job if you don't get the support that you need. And we can't serve our community if we constantly have turnover, if good people are leaving because they have good offers elsewhere, if we can't build the kind of high caliber staff that we need to deliver on the promises that we make to the people that we serve. And so I really appreciate the presentation by our county team. I appreciate the testimony by our Public Employee Union, SEIU 221, and all the work that you all do. Because at the end of the day, this county is only as strong as the folks that work here and that provide those services and that show up every single day to serve our community. And we can't do that work if we're not able to recruit amazing people and then retain folks once they're here in the door. So this is a really important topic. I think it's really timely that we have this conversation, given sort of all the other conversations that are happening right now. And I hope that we can continue making, improving recruitment and retention at the County of San Diego are our top priority. So thank you for everything. Okay. With that, do we need a motion to accept the report? No, we can just move on. Okay. We don't need a motion or a second. Fantastic. Okay. Okay, great. So we now move on to item number 22. This is a discussion item. This is reforming the county's reserve policy. And before I turn to public comment, I'd like to ask if my colleague Supervisor Montgomery Stapp, if you'd like to make any introductory comments, or would you like to wait till after the public has commented?
I will wait until after the public has commented on this item. I'm excited to bring it forward with you.
Okay, great. Okay, well, then I will just kick us off with a couple remarks, and then we'll turn to public comment. And first, I just want to say I'm grateful to my colleague Supervisor Montgomery Stapp for your collaboration and co-authorship and thought partnership in this really important item, which I think has been a long time in coming. But just to put it in context, on Friday, the Trump administration released a new federal budget proposal that would severely undermine core public services, including housing and environmental protection by 40%, behavioral health, zeroing out programs that support clean water, food assistance, and neighborhood development. And these are not just theoretical cuts. We've already seen $40 million cut from our public health budget, and this was money that we were and are relying on to do really critical services in our community, including processing tuberculosis tests here locally, performing vaccinations in our community. And we unfortunately fear that much, much more is coming, that we have, there's draft budget circulating in Washington that proposed cutting up to 30% in Medicaid. And this hasn't happened yet, but I think at core, we need to be ready and we need to be prepared because we have to be ready to respond to whatever crisis that we face as a county. So just zooming out, this is not only about the moment we sit in, but it's certainly triggered in part by being able and prepared to respond to the moment that we sit in, that in moments like this, when the federal government steps back or local government or state governments slash programs, that we as a local government need the tools to step up and serve our communities in a crisis. So that's certainly a central element of what we need to be ready to confront. But this is a longer standing conversation, and it's not only about responding to this crisis, but being prepared to respond to crises in general. So right now, San Diego County holds billions in reserves, and outdated reserves artificially inflate how much we need to hold. So this proposal brings our county in line with national best practices recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. And kind of looking backwards, almost four years, when I was first elected, we as a board formed a fiscal subcommittee and spent quite a number of months trying to understand what are best practices? What are the best practices statewide and nationally on reserve policies? And we did a really comprehensive deep dive. We looked at counties across California. We looked at cities. We looked at the Government Finance Officers Association guidelines. And it was from that work that these recommendations were developed. And I think it's important to trace the background of this because this is, as I said, being docketed today in large part in response to the emergency created, but the work to structure what a better and more sustainable and more fiscally responsible reserve policy should look like has been four years in the making. So first of all, the proposal that is docketed today sets our reserve targets based on actual operating expenditures, not on one-time capital projects. In other words, currently, the way that we calculate how much we need to have in reserves assumes that we not only need to plan for two months of operating costs in the case of an emergency, we also need to set aside however much we use the previous year for capital expenditures. And the best way to understand that would be like putting aside in your two-month emergency fund however much you need to pay for a kitchen remodel. You don't need the kitchen remodel money in your emergency rainy day fund. So this creates, this is in line with Government Financial, Finance Officers Association best practices, makes our reserve target based on actual operating expenditures, and does not include one-time capital projects. Those one-time capital projects are counted for somewhere else in another bucket, which is called the committed funds, which we could get out a chart and I could walk through. I've now done this chart a lot of times in our fiscal subcommittee, but just to suffice that to say. Second, and equally important, this proposed policy clarifies what funds count towards our reserve target, which would allow us to include both assigned and unassigned reserves in calculating what counts towards our reserve's target. This is what is recommended by the GFOA. So our current policy is not in alignment with Government Financial Accounting best practices. What we are recommending is to bring our county in alignment with the GFOA's best fiscal practices by counting what's in the assigned bucket and the unassigned bucket together in order to meet our reserve targets. Our current reserve policies pretend that money doesn't exist essentially. And that is not just bad policy, making it impossible for us to tap money that we clearly need to be able to access if and when all of our local funds are cut, but also is just frankly shoddy accounting practice and is not in alignment with GFOA. So it's a long thing I'm saying right now, so I'm just explaining everything. So this board item does not authorize any new spending, but it does give us more transparent, flexible, and realistic a picture of what is available in a time of a crisis. So this reform would ensure our reserve policy actually reflects fiscal stewardship along with readiness to act when our community needs us. So what would happen? How would this work? How would we change our reserve policy so that it ensures transparency about what's available and empower the board to make strategic decisions when crisis hits, but not authorize new spending today? What it does is it creates an unlocked reserves fund or account that itself has safeguards, that is what I would like, as an economist, like to call counter cyclical spending. So what that means is that it would be available if and when the federal government makes significant cuts to local budgets, if the state governments make significant cuts to local budgets, or if we face a recession. A recession is defined as more than two, sorry, two consecutive quarters of negative growth, or we're facing strategic urgent investment imperatives as recommended by the CAO. So it does not just unlock this bucket, but it does create clarity around how much is available for us to be able to respond to a crisis, and it defines what constitutes a crisis. In other words, federal spending cuts, state spending cuts, two quarters of a recession, or urgent investment needs as identified by the CAO. And it also ensures that we'd only be able to spend this money 25% a year so that we're not, we don't just spend it all in one place. I'm sure there will be questions and concerns by my colleagues when we get to that point. So I certainly welcome a robust discussion. But what I am hopeful for and what I invite everybody to engage in is the reality of what's actually presented here, not a lot of rhetoric about reserves that one might share, you know, read in the paper that might not fully actually be accurate in terms of the policy presented. So hopefully, my colleagues are reading the policy and we can have a grounded conversation about the specific details. And I'm really excited for public comment that engage on this topic. So those are my opening comments, and I'm sure my colleague will have many more things to say when, after public comment, but let's just turn to public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reimer. We have 34 requests to speak on this item, 22 in person, and 12 requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received 66 e-commerce, 40 of those in support, and 25 in opposition. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 22 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Again, since there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you'll have one minute to address the board, and we'll ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I will be calling you in groups of three, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name and come forward when your name is called. Begin with, I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals, allegedly Audra, Steve Y., and Masha Landau. If I've called your name, please come forward. How excited are you, Tara? You said you were excited.
You're not even paying attention. My person uses the name Audra, so billions of dollars in reserves. Yeah, we're like, we need you guys to pay more fees so we can get full cost recovery. It's so funny to see how you guys deal with money, because if there was really a lack of money, it would show. And it surely doesn't. But thank God, because you guys aren't providing housing, you're lying to people about the environment, and clean water, if you mean poo water, okay, and toxic water, poisoned water, yeah, that's good. So that fact that it's down 44% is a good thing. But you're probably going to blame Trump for your continued lack of ability to provide the housing and all of those things, right? It's his fault. Doesn't have anything to do with us and our, you know, racketeering that we're doing. So we're just putting the money in our pockets, right, Jim? Right, exactly. All of you, actually. I mean, Tara, what's with the 13 million in your coffers? Maybe you can add that to the reserves.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi there. Steve Y., Department of Public Works and proud SEIU 221 member. The work we do is vital. It ensures essential services are delivered, public health is protected, and strengthens our communities. But we are facing a critical moment. Economic instability and political division are taking a toll, not just on our residents, but on the workers who serve them. County employees are not immune to the pressures of rising costs and limited resources. We continue to serve, but are stretched thin. The proposed budget does not meet the scale of the crisis we are in. Our most vulnerable, those struggling with housing, mental health, and basic survival, cannot wait. Without meaningful investment, we risk deepening the challenges we are trying to solve. County workers are the backbone of this system. Without us, these services stop. We are not asking for luxury. We're asking for the resources to do our jobs and to care for our families. This starts with unlocking the reserves. This rainy day fund was created for exactly this kind of moment, and right now, it is not raining, it is pouring. Let's act with urgency. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite three additional speakers, Sam Griffith, Adrian Cheprese, and David Gassaway. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Masha Landau, I'm with Public Works. In recent years, the county has experienced a high turnover. Now more than ever, it is important to offer competitive salaries and benefits so that we can recruit and retain a skilled workforce. Whenever an employee leaves, the county loses a valuable investment. Personally, I've seen luge engineers leave to other public agencies or private companies for better pay or benefits. It is sad and difficult to replace those engineers and other staff each and every time. I've been with the county for over 13 years. I love working here, working with the people I serve. I hope the county will take the right steps to support its existing and future workforce. The reserves we're asking for are meant to serve our communities, and that should start by supporting the workforce that serves them. Please invest in us and so we can continue to invest in the San Diego community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Sam Griffith, and I've been an engineering technician with the Department of Public Works for one year. I was born and raised here, and I got my engineering degree from SDSU in 2023. I keep up with the other graduates, and I make less than every other engineer I know. My father worked for San Diego Unified School District as a construction inspector, and he encouraged me to work for the public sector for the satisfaction of working on behalf of the taxpayers. Working as a construction inspector for the county, I now make almost as much as he did in 1998. Meanwhile, housing costs have gone up almost 800% since then. The situation is even more dire for most other job classifications. We can't afford to live in the region we serve. The costs are always outside our wages. The cost of essentials in San Diego are beating our workers down, and every day we lose some of our workforce to other municipalities and private industry. I'm asking that you make pursuing the noble goal of the public good to be sustainable by using the reserve to fund better wages, stronger pension tiers, and competitive time off to live and enjoy the county we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm David Gassaway. I'm with the County of San Diego's Materials Lab and the Department of Public Works, and I've been an employee with the county for 18 years. First of all, I just want to say thank you so much for taking the time to hear the comments. I know a lot of them are filled with vitriol. I don't want to give you any of that today. Just want to give you the straight-up facts. The reserve policy reform, all for it. There is an urgent investment, and it's in our Public Works Department and our other folks that work for the county. In construction engineering, we currently have 26 positions that are budgeted. We have a vacancy of over 30%, and the remaining 2/3 of people that are there, half of those are underfills. And it's only a matter of time before they leave and move on to other public agencies or other opportunities. So again, return on investment, absolutely. This is the time for it. All for the reform. Thank you so much.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite three additional speakers, Gilberto Vera, Oliver Twist, and Christopher Tanoco.
Hello, Adrian Cheprese, Department of Public Works. The county of San Diego was once the employer of choice, but today, it's a revolving door. We invest time and money to train employees, only to watch them leave for better pay and benefits elsewhere. Those who stay are left carrying the weight, facing burnout, low morale, and unsustainable workloads. This recruitment and retention crisis is no accident. It's a direct result of the county's failure to provide competitive wages, benefits, and pensions. We stand united as SEIU members, as public servants, calling for real investment in the people who power this county. The county's own general management system recognizes that employee satisfaction is the foundation of quality public service. It's time for our leaders to act on those words. That means opening the county's fundings, reserves to support workers and the residents we serve. These reserves exist for times of critical need, and that time is now. Invest in us so we can keep investing in San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Gil Vera. I'm a Deputy Director of Legal Aid Society, San Diego. I know this is a difficult budget year at all levels of government, and, you know, as a result of the budget deficit, we're at risk of losing essential services, especially for low-income households in our county. And they depend on these services not only to live, but to survive. This is the exact reason why the rainy day fund was created, and this is the exact moment we need to open up those funds to be able to address the needs of our community. Lastly, reducing services will disproportionately impact communities of color, low-income communities, and elderly and disabled households on fixed incomes. Approximately 30% of renters in San Diego County are paying more than 50% of their income towards housing. Well over 480,000 of San Diego County residents are 65 years or older, and of those, 20% are living below the federal poverty line. If additional funding isn't made available to preserve the essential services for this population, more people will fall into homelessness, which will cost taxpayers more in the long term.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. May I request the county supervisor's attention? Mr. Joel Anderson, may I get your attention? Mr. Joel Anderson, may I get your attention?
I can see you right here. I'm Chris, a first-generation here in the U.S., nine-year U.S. Navy veteran, and currently an environmental health technician at the county. Each county employee plays a vital role in maintaining the quality of life that our residents rely on every single day. But the reality is, many of us are struggling to make ends meet. The cost of living has continued to rise, housing fueled childcare groceries, yet our wages have not kept pace. A competitive wage is not a luxury, it is a necessity. I urge you to consider a meaningful wage increase that reflects both the rising costs us employees face and the immense value we provide to our community. Investing in our workforce is an investment in the stability, resilience, and future of our country.
Thank you. Time's up. The next speaker is coming forward. I'll call three additional speakers, Laura Costello, Sanjeev Kay, and Eileen Bratton. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Hi, good morning. Oliver Twist here, and I am a government watchdog. Those of you who are probably familiar with me, I've been here over a year and a half warning about the fiscal cliff that San Diego County is on. For those who don't know, the budget has gone up by 30% in just five years. It's unsustainable, and my big criticism is that this doesn't have to be this way. You have continually gone into subsidizing things that are not in your purview, whether it was $5 million for the illegal immigrant fund, the funding defense, or, let's talk about the city of San Diego. How many times have you bailed them out? Whether it was the epicenter, the stormwater victims, which I actually did agree with that, because they were literally left high and dry by the city of San Diego, and then other things that you have subsidized the city on. So please stop, and, as I said during the protest outside, tax me more, Tara. Please stop your driving San Diego County off of a fiscal cliff.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Sanjeev Kulshreshe from, I work at the Health and Human Service Agency for past more than 80 years. Under the current circumstances of the crisis of the budget cuts from the state as well as from the federal level, and considering the conditions of the increasing inflation rates, cost of living here, it all impacts our job performance as well as our housing conditions and family structures. So I would be in favor of requesting the supervisors to open the funds to invest in us providing higher salary wages, higher flex credits, and maintain the core and essential services rather than eliminating them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Honorable Supervisors. My name is Laura Costello. I'm a health inspector going on 25 years serving San Diego County. I'm also a SEIU union member. I'm here today to address a crisis threatening our workforce, stagnant wages in the face of soaring costs. San Diego's cost of living has surged. Food prices are up 12%, gas prices are climbing, rents costs keep increasing substantially. We're among the lowest-paid counties in California. These are not just numbers. Inspectors like me are struggling to afford rent, groceries, and gas to do our jobs. We work very hard ensuring our communities stay safe. Low wages are now leading to staff vacancies. I urge you to prioritize a meaningful cost of living increase, open the reserves, let's use these resources to help the dedicated county employees continue to protect our communities, invest in us to protect San Diego's future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is coming forward. I'll call three additional speakers, Brian Lafferty, Josh Bohannon, and Brian Kano. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Eileen Bratton again, SEIU. Tomorrow, I have 26 years of service with the county in public mental health. Many of our clients would end up in higher levels of care, such as jails or state hospitals, costing more than if we have seasoned committed staff to assist our neighbors to live in the community. When the county invests in its workforce, we can retain and keep qualified mental health staff to treat these vulnerable clients, and they can live in the community. These services are best received in the context of relationships, and when people leave, our trust with our clients is broken. We are in a moment of economic and political uncertainty, and many of us are hurting, including county workers, who are concerned that they won't be able to stay living in San Diego. The support starts by opening the reserves. Reserves are not an end, that keeps accumulating, just to point out how responsible our county has been. It's a means for the community, and when times are tough, each person has to save money, and they have to spend that money when the emergencies come. We are in an emergency. I think my time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Morning. My name is Brian Lafferty. Work for the Medical Examiner, and been with the county 12 years, and I'm a proud union member. So Supervisor Desmond, you said in an email to your supporters that these reserves are supposed to protect you and your family during real emergencies, wildfires, natural disasters, economic crises. I agree that they are supposed to protect us during economic crisis, and we are in an economic crisis, one that is caused by government, the federal government, who would rather slash billions in social safety net programs and instead, you know, increase funding to homeland security. Look, our communities should not have to suffer because there are folks in government, particularly Trump, who think feeding families, keeping roots over your head is enema. So please open the reserves. Our communities really deserve better during these trying times. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Board of Supervisors. My name is Josh Bohannon with Father Joe's Villages. We offer housing, outreach, healthcare, street health, and substance use disorder treatment. All of these things are federally funded, and they end and prevent homelessness, one life at a time. And, you know, one thing we're terribly concerned about is that in the last 24 months, we've seen homelessness increase, more people falling into homelessness than exiting. Regardless of all the work we're doing, there's still a stem and a tide that's going against us. And right now, if we're going to reduce these services, reduce the funds, what we're seeing on the street in our communities, the health of it, is going to decline. And I think that's an important consideration, protecting the services that we're utilizing, protecting the funds that we have, making sure that we can provide overdose treatment, psychiatry, counseling, all of that is federally connected. So if the federal funding does stop, we're going to have to rely on our hometown heroes, the county board of supervisors, to help make sure that we keep the funding and protect it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is coming forward. I'd like to invite three additional speakers, Leslie Masland, Michael Brando, and Brenda Nunez. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good morning, Board. My name is Brian Kano. I've been a real property appraiser since 2018. I'm a union steward at the local 221. Our branch of government is responsible for funding. We fund everything, public safety, fire, infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, K through 12 schools, you know, you name it. Rainy days are not coming, rainy days are here. These funds need to be released. The people that you are trying to leave out in the rain are everyone you depend on. We put out fires, we guard you while you sleep, we drive the ambulances, we are nurses in the hospitals, we direct your call, we process your tax claims and educate your children. We control almost every aspect of your public life. Open the reserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Leslie Ann Masland, librarian with the county for 11 years and SEIU 221 steward. Our libraries are the last safety net for our most vulnerable residents. For a previous caller, we've had our parking lot neighbors come into the library during a health crisis for us to call 911 for them. So yes, people do call on their local librarian for auxiliary support. It is said that the first sign of a civilization in ancient culture is the femur that had been broken and then healed. The sudden cut in support services for our residents is a devastating blow to those on the cusp of becoming unsheltered. Our previous board neglected the bare essentials for a generation by hoarding billions and voting themselves raises. You have the opportunity to remove the dragon atop the hoard of public funds and return the money to the people through services and programs that maintains the flow of support services to our most vulnerable. County workers across departments are working on skeletal crews where a 10% vacancy rate can be devastating for workloads and daily operations. It is pouring. Open the reserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Brenda Nunez. I am an SEIU member and an HSS for 19 years. I work, I do, I provide food, cash aid, and medical coverages for the community to get back on their feet. Jim Desmond, I have a welcoming basket for you, for your newborn grandchild. A few weeks ago, we tried to give this key to you, but you were on your way to the hospital, so we weren't able to give it to you, including this key in the basket. Please use this key to open the reserves to help in this time of uncertainty and need for the community. The future of the children, like your grandchild, depend on it. I will leave this with the clerk. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. The next speaker is coming forward. I'd like to invite three additional speakers, Joanne Franciscus, Andrew Picard, and Dion Akers.
Michael, Tara Lawson Reamer is not your friend. In fact, if you took this picture of Donald Trump and slid it over right behind Tara Lawson Reamer, it would be perfect, because these two work in the same level of consciousness, and I'll talk about this later, down here. The way that you're terrorizing people about money is inexcusable. This board has been involved in the rapid decline of the U.S. dollar, and all these people's concerns is accurate. In fact, the tidal wave is coming, where some people may not be able to even afford a loaf of bread. This is all by design as we morph into a new system. A lot of people have a big learning curve to go. Tara, you do a good job with all your language. I've got multiple degrees too, but I could go head-to-head with you in debating these issues. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Joanne Franciscus. I'm the CEO of the Legal Aid Society of San Diego and a resident of District 2, and I strongly support item 22. Updating the county's reserve policies is fiscally responsible and in line with best national practices. Moreover, it is moral imperative. 10% of the county's population is living, are living in poverty. More people are on the brink of losing their healthcare coverage, not being able to keep a roof over their head, and not being able to feed their kids. Without essential services, federal cuts are not just going to make money tight for these people, they're going to have life-or-death consequences, and it will cost us, the taxpayers, substantially more to address these harms after they have occurred than it will to prevent them. Emergency rooms are more expensive than checkups, homelessness is more expensive than housing. If the reserves and funds are not meant to prevent these catastrophic harms, what are they for? The rainy day is here, it is today, it is not next year. That will be for the wreckage that is left if we don't act now. I implore the board to vote yes on 22. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Andrew Picard. I'm the Executive Director of Stepping Stone of San Diego. We are a local nonprofit that provides housing, addiction recovery, and mental health services to marginalized communities. Primarily, we serve the LGBTQ community, and we're one of the only nonprofits in the country that specializes in mental health care and housing for this population. We are entirely reliant on federal funding. 85% of our budget is federal grants passed through for the county that we're grateful for. We rely on this funding, and any reductions mean that our beds are not getting full. We already see an extremely high demand for our services and have to turn folks away. As has been said before, it's more expensive to shut down programs and see our residents go to the ICU or to be sleeping on the streets. The LGBT community sees five times higher rates of homelessness, higher rates of addiction, and it's even higher for our transgender siblings. As Washington DC turns its back, we appreciate...
Thank you. The next speaker is coming forward. I'd like to invite the remaining speakers in person, Marco Espinoza and Crystal Irving.
Good morning, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, Honorable Supervisors, staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. My name is Dion Akers, here on behalf of San Diego Mayor Todd Gloria. I'm here to express the city of San Diego's strong support for item 22, reforming the county's reserve policy. Financial reserve policies that are overly conservative or aggressive limit our ability to be nimble in times of chaos or tie our hands of providing critical services for our constituents in crisis. The county's current policy is unfortunately limiting the county from expanding core services or having the ability to step up to the proposed deep cuts from Washington. As Supervisor Lawson Reamer said, it is time to update the county's reserve policy, and by making modest adjustments to its policy, the county has the ability to unlock hundreds of millions of dollars to serve our communities and our residents. As local jurisdictions validate the challenging combination of rising costs across the board, a retreat of federal and state support, and growing crises in our community that require core services of county government, now is the time to act and demonstrate that we can protect both people and our bottom lines. Today's action is a huge step in the right direction, and we thank you for bringing it forward. Please vote yes.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Crystal Irving, and I'm proud to serve as President of our union SEIU Local 221. At this point, you've heard from our members and other community organizations about how important these reserves are, not just for the county of San Diego, but also for the workforce and the communities that we get to serve every single day. And in the interest of time, I will not recap every single point made. However, I will say that we are urging the board to vote in favor of changing the reserves policy to allow you all to have more freedom and flexibility on how to invest in the workforce, which is also an investment in the community, as it ensures that we have the county government that actually works effectively and efficiently for the people it was created to serve. So it is time to change the policy on the reserves, this rainy day fund, because the reality is, it is raining here in San Diego.
Your final call for Marco Espinoza. Not seeing any movement in the chamber. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We will begin with our first caller.
Hello, good morning. Marco Espinoza, apologize for wearing sunglasses. Number one, I lost my regular prescription glasses on the trolley on my way here, so I need to see. And also, sorry for arriving late as well. And I'm at City Council chambers in my ear right here, so. Oh, in the item 22, I read the part, vulnerable communities. It was something labeled city in their budget conversations right now, they're going with communities of concern. And I asked them yesterday, just constitute, what exactly does, for the county, vulnerable communities mean, specifically when mentioning and allocating funds, et cetera, et cetera, at times? Spanish translators are great. I heard the one speaking yesterday. Yeah, that was, I think that was at the city, sorry. Talk more later, thanks.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We'll start with our first caller.
This is yet another last-minute half-bakes idea that probably would be good if developed properly over time, but that doesn't. You need to reject it. The big picture is that you want to include both the funded and unassigned funds and the reserve funds, that is, funds you allocate for a specific purpose now and funds needed to maintain the projects in coming years or for operational needs. It's kind of like giving candy to your kid today and tomorrow, taking a quarter of it back because it is too sugary. Or giving your kids their allowance today and a week later, taking it back a quarter of it for bad behavior, like the feds taking back 40 million of what they approved for HCSA, or 6 million of the 11 million grant for family and mental health services and all major schools. It seems, in short, that you're...
Do you hear from the next caller?
They don't give you enough time. Okay, Gonswello here. So, "It's raining men." Gosh, that's what I feel like singing when I see you guys in those rain whatevers. Beautiful, I love the hairdo crystal, I just have to say that, looking great. Anyways, okay, so blaming Trump is just a telltale sign of how the majority of people only pay attention when they themselves are being directly affected by something. Why does it take for people to be directly affected to stand up, to hold government accountable? Trump administration didn't shut down or penalize small businesses during the scam pandemic, it was the Biden administration that did all that. And here we are today... And here we are today with a society who is just like totally broken, aside from being, you know, asked by government to further sacrifice.
Do you hear from the next caller?
Julie Sutton. While I originally started this to call in because I was opposing the increase or using the funds, the reserve funds, based on a op-ed that was in the Tribune by Supervisor Anderson. However, in listening to the comments and listening to the board members, I have since lessened my opposition while I am still leaning that way because I don't need, I don't think that there should be funding, we should be funding with reserves for operational needs. But I think there needs to be more transparency on both sides. I think both sides are putting forth their own agenda, and I think there needs to be transparency. And I think that's obvious in the fact that this has been going on for four years, you said, and
Do you hear from the next caller?
It's true, Tara seems to have manipulated Ebony Introduce into introducing this last-minute terror raid on the reserves. Months ago, when Jim introduced an item about the county getting back to basics and prioritizing core services, Nora Monica Tara voted against it. Instead, we got Tara wasting millions on printing commie red notices and introducing countless political theater items that went nowhere. And how many frivolous policies have been introduced under her watch? A few reasons the federal government is defunding San Diego counties: rampant fraud, waste, and abuse; the enabling of human trafficking and illegal immigration via the $5 million a year lawyer program; the $9 million migrant shelter; the unlawful sanctuary status declarations; allowing illegal immigrants to suck Medicaid dry; and all of the totalitarian COVID fraud that put our county and country into permanent debt. The last spending policy was obviously not restrictive enough. Reserves are reserved for emergencies only, and Tara's misplaced priorities are not in emergency. Hands off our tax dollars, communists. Sorry to rain on your parade. Get it.
Do you hear from the next caller?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Becky Rapp, and I'm a public health educator and a member of my county planning group, and I appreciate Supervisor Anderson's call to action against raiding the county's reserves. Protecting our financial safety net is the right move to safeguard unincorporated communities in times of crisis. However, I am concerned about the inconsistency. If Supervisor Anderson is so committed to protecting the health and safety of the backcountry residents, why is he also pushing to drastically expand the aspects of the marijuana industry, including retail, commercial, and agricultural operations in these very same areas? When the majority of residents have made it clear they don't want it, and it's been proven in other jurisdictions to be disastrous. Marijuana operations in the backcountry threaten our public health, increase fire risks during law enforcement, and go against the will of all of the community. You can't claim to protect us from one form of harm while in
Do you hear from the next caller?
Hey, I want to remind everyone that the county made a choice and made sure that they protected the people that they care, that protect them. For example, the lawyer got a humongous raise, but yet they knew this was going to happen, so they made sure that they pushed that through early. They also gave raises to a bunch of people. Then they waited for Trump to do these cuts, basically because we're funneling our money outside of the unit, you know, instead of giving it to citizens, we're giving it to illegal aliens, and that is getting cut. So yeah, no, without a doubt, in order for you guys to maintain your seat, you're going to have to open up the funds because the unions are telling you to, and they commit registration voter fraud, which keeps you in seats. So you guys are all going to go ahead and say yes to this for that re-
Do you hear from the record? That speaker was Gambler. On to the next caller.
This is Karen Lee, and I am against raiding the county reserves to pay for increased continuing expenses. Like everybody else, the county needs to live within their means. But that being said, you guys need to pay your employees a living wage because I support our county employees that provide critical services every day. The county needs to go back to the drawing board and look at the budget and see what critical expenses need to be paid, and then go from there. Look at each program and see, is this working or is it a money pit? So please, it's short-sighted to raid the reserves, and you guys need to live within your expenses, and you need to pay your employees a living wage. I support you all, but raiding the reserves is not the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Hello, this is Catherine Rhodes, and I say yes on this, but one thing I don't know is, what exactly, what funds are you talking about? You have, you know, I'm sure it's the general fund, but what other funds? Are you trying to raid the road funds that go to the unincorporated area? If you are, then I would say no. So please actually mention what funds you're talking about. And then something shady happened in the periodic financial report today. For some reason, hundreds of millions of dollars that were documented in last month's periodic financial report for the general fund are now like missing. It's really, I don't know what it is, but the fund balance is, is, something's going on in the thing. It seems like somebody's hiding money or they moved money somewhere. So that's something, but what we really need to know is what, Tara Lawson Reamer, what funds are you talking about?
Do you hear from the final caller?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Anne Riddle here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Please go ahead.
Thank you. A little bit of static on the line. I called in on item 22 because I'm, I'm ambivalent. I think for many long times, we've had our reserves have been larger than makes sense for our municipality of the county compared to other municipalities, and that we can use it. However, as I've watched the county operate, I've wondered if we are spending wisely the money we have, and the items that are of grave concern to me out here in the unincorporated area is the way we spend money on the bringing of marijuana businesses to the backcountry who, our planning group doesn't want it. No planning group out here wants it, so we're wondering about that. And then when the 1,000-page EIR, the environmental impact report, came out, all I could think of is how
Do you hear? Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. I will now turn it to my colleague who co-authored this item with me, Supervisor Montana Montgomery Stump.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. Thank you to you and your staff for being a great collaborative partner on this item, and also for providing an overview from yourself. As stated, I am, I think it's time, I'm excited to bring this forward. I appreciate everyone who has come to speak on this item. I know it's been several years sort of in the making, and this has been a topic of conversation for a very long time, even before I have been here. So I appreciate it coming forward, as I've said, for such a time as this. The goal of the item is to ensure that the county is prepared for any financial uncertainties surrounding state and federal funding cuts. And I do understand and commend the CIO for bringing a budget forward that is a responsible budget, but there are still assumptions that we're, assumptions that we're making in this budget, and there are still things that we don't know. As I discussed in depth in my request to provide a two-step budget process for this board, that was rejected, a responsible request to not only wait for the District 1 seat to be occupied, but also to wait for what we would see from the federal and state government. I stated the same thing, that we don't quite know what we're in for, for this budget. And so there is a real possibility, it's more and more likely, that we could see steep cuts or changes in federal-state funding to Medi-Cal, to housing, and other services, core services that we're mandated to provide. We are planning to see steep cuts in those things. And of course, as has been mentioned in this meeting, it's merely a fact, it's all in front of our faces, that the president did release his budget proposal, which calls for $163 billion in spending cuts, although it contains few details. It is a skinny budget. But it does come after House Republicans supported cutting Medicaid by $888 billion over the next 10 years. I think we'd be crazy not to acknowledge that that's what's going on, no matter what side we're on, no matter what party we identify with. These are facts, and they're right in front of our face, and I believe it is our responsibility to prepare for that. This policy that is put forward today does not raid anything. It changes a policy to give us more flexibility. It is not reckless. It is responsible. And I take issue with using those types of words because if you read the policy, for anyone who's interested in reading, it goes by the national standards, the best practices that not only the county should follow, but all counties in the entire United States should follow. So it's very disingenuous to use words like that. We can disagree on issues, we can disagree on all types of things, but the truth is the truth. And this policy does not raid any account. This policy gets us prepared for what may come. You know what? I think our job is to hope for the best and plan for the worst, and it would be great if we didn't see the types of cuts that we're anticipating. But these cuts, if they happen, they will be happening to our core services. We're mandated to administer these programs from the state government, and the programs are funded by the federal government. What kind of world do we live in where a policy like this is being brought forward that is a very modest policy that is being called reckless? That's crazy to me. I understand we can disagree, but I just want to take issue with that. I really do. So I just wanted to, I wrote down a few things as I was, I was listening, and I think I covered them all. But, you know, for me, this is, this is an issue of morality. That word I know is not used much, and maybe it shouldn't be in the context of government, and I understand that. But as we sit here on top of billions of dollars, seeing people suffering or anticipating that they will be suffering, or both, I think it is immoral not to change this policy. I don't care how you identify. I think it's immoral. And I stand on that, which is why I co-authored this policy and decided to bring it forward. The last thing I want to say is, I think this, we don't, because we can't fully quantify the result of not acting on a policy like this, it's not a larger part of the conversation. But if housing funds, rental assistance, healthcare, SNAP benefits, temporary assistance for needy families are cut, what is the result of that? More people will be sleeping on our streets, and it will cost us more. And you know what? Some people would rather pay $162 a day to have someone in jail than to offer much less than that for them to be in our communities, thriving and trying to make a better way for them and their families. And when I talk about morality, that's what I'm talking about. Because if we look and we take these cuts and what's going on, these proposals, they're out there for us to read. If we take them seriously, then we can see what the result will be. And it is not irresponsible to want to plan for the future as leaders. I think that's what we were elected for. So with that, there's not a motion, I'll make one, to move this reforming of our county reserve policy forward to align, to align with the Government Finance Officers Association best practices. Last thing, reserves by definition, a portion of financial resources set aside, providing a buffer against unforeseen circumstances or future needs, putting away for a rainy day. I really would like, if we're not, if we're not anticipating a rainy day right now, would like to know what the heck that looks like, because that's what I'm looking at right now. And this, this is something I've been saying before the administration today, which I appreciate the demonstrative nature of what you all have done, but this is something that I've been saying for a long time now. So with that, I'll move the item. Thank you.
Thank you all, everyone. Thank you so much for the support, but please do not clap. We need to maintain order in the chamber. Thank you, and I'm happy to second the item. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Appreciate it. And thank you, everyone who came and spoke today. I do not agree that the political scare tactics in this board letter, that Congress is discussing and debating a budget as they do every year. These reserves are meant to protect families and taxpayers in cases of real emergencies, wildfires, floods, natural disasters, and economic downturns. But instead, this item proposes to raid the reserves to cover up years of this body, of this board, overspending, funding pet projects outside of the county's jurisdiction, and departments that don't deliver county core services. If you want, most of you spoke today about an emergency today, and some spoke about the potential of the federal fund being cut. If the federal funds are, if they are cut, these are all proposed at this point in time, we've got the potential reserves to deal with it. However, we are in an emergency now, so how did we get here? If you want to blame anybody, blame this board. We overspent $138 million in last year's budget. $138 million. The shell game with the reserves is not the answer to overspending. And if we do use the reserves, it's only going to perpetuate an internal problem that we are spending too much. We're spending more than we have. We've added multiple new departments in the last few years, over 2,500 new employees, which comes to about $1 million more per year that we are spending. So this item, to me, is full of fear mongering of all these cuts that are proposed. We actually have no idea what may or may not be cut, but the proposed cuts do not warrant going after the reserves today. We have an $8.6 billion budget. We should be able to prioritize, out of $8.6 billion, how to pay our employees what they deserve. We should be able to do that with what we have. We should not be looking at one-time money for ongoing services or salaries. You know, if we were to take a million dollars' worth of reserves and add it to salaries and benefits, the next year we have to take another million, and then the next year, another 1.1 million, 1.3, 1.5. That's not how you treat reserves. We can't do that with reserves for ongoing costs, and salaries and benefits are ongoing costs. We should be able to find that within our own budget. As I said earlier, we added more than 2,500 positions, costing $100 million a year to our budget. We need to right-size this organization. We need to right-size this organization, and I know our CIO is working on it, specifically through attrition, but we're not there yet. We have, right now, we have other dollars, $7.7 million a year we pay for free phone calls for inmates. I think that's a cost that we could, we could look at. $5 million for a legal defense fund for illegal immigrants being deported is being paid for with our tax, our dollars that are not going to you. $4.5 million to the Office of Evaluation, Performance, and Analytics. I think if our Office of Evaluation, Performance, and Analytics really took a good look, they'd say, hey, we got to change some stuff internally. $2.5 million for the Office of Equity and Racial Justice. Equality should be part of the culture, not a department. But it should be. $1.2 million for the Office of Labor Standards and Enforcements. This is the state's job, not the county's job. So we have also almost no money available for capital projects in this budget coming up. Out of the $8.6 billion, only 45 million for capital projects. And I realize that many, that comes and goes, that flows, but this is a huge budget shortfall. Less than one-half of 1% go into county projects. These items are like sheriff's, substations, fire stations, libraries, parks, bridges, roads, all that's needed, one-half of 1%. Beyond that, we got a major jail renovation. And last year, we had $136 million that went to capital projects. This year, it's down to 45 million. So again, that's one-half of 1% of our budget going to capital projects. This is a sign of a budget that's out of whack with ongoing costs. I, I agree, you should be paid more, you should be the top-paid people in the state. I mean, in order to keep people and retain people, and give people, you know, the incentive to work and want to come and show up and do their job, I wish we had the money to do that. And out of 8.6 billion, we should be able to find it. But going to a bucket of money that, for ongoing costs, is not the answer. And, and, Zabel, thank you very much, SEIU, forgive me this folder this morning. But this is bad timing, and unfortunately, we're in labor, not unfortunate, but we are in labor negotiations right now. All right, all right, you can have that, I'll take it. Hey, and it took me a while to figure out what the ponchos were for, the rainy day. But anyway, I'll tell you, so we are in labor negotiations right now, and what this does is creates a false sense that that one-time funding can somehow bolster ongoing salaries for benefits of labor. If we, if we were to give you $5 million more out of the budget, out of the reserves, that would have to come every year, and eventually the reserves would be gone. That's not the way we should use reserves. So, and the last point, I think the board letter states this would create an unlocked reserves, in case we need them. Three votes unlocks the reserves, we can do that anytime, we don't need a special board letter to do that. So, you know, this is, we can allocate reserves, we'd have allocated reserves during wildfires, COVID, and floods, but we need to control our internal spending first, and protect the taxpayers and our employees, and not drain the reserve regardless of what the feds do. We are in this position now, we're in a position, this is not, the feds, the big boogeyman, is going to come in and change things. Yes, they may, and we've got the capability to do that if and when it happens. But promising reserves for salaries is not the right thing. So I'm not going to be supporting this. I think we really have to take a hard look in the mirror of what we are doing as a board, in controlling the spending, not overspending, and making sure that the, that our employees are paid well. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call myself, because I put myself on the queue. Thank you. I think this is a valuable conversation. I do want to take a moment, though, to separate two distinct issues, which have been conflated by my colleague. There's the issue regarding the reserve policy, and then there's the other issue about whether we want to doge our local government and cut essential services that are important for our community. And those are two distinct issues. And the reason I want to be clear about that is because the policy myself and my colleague put forward today, which would unlock the reserves, have very clear safeguards regarding how those would be utilized, they'd be utilized in a countercyclical fashion to safeguard against federal and state budget cuts, and for urgent uses that are not ongoing, as recommended by the CIO. So the entire argument that was just presented by my colleague is a straw man, because that's not what's contemplated in the reserve policy. So I'm just setting that aside. But I do think what is clear today is that you have very different visions of what our board and what our county government should be. What my colleague mentioned is that he's concerned that we have had staff increases in important areas like Health and Human Services.
I didn't say that.
And those staff, you, you mentioned staff increases, the primary staff increases, and when you look at the budget as presented by Ebony, is 190 in Health and Human Services. So either you're talking about those, or you're talking about wins in public safety.
No, I didn't, I didn't call them out.
Okay, well then, what are you saying?
I'm saying with all the departments and all the hiring that we've done recently.
Which hiring?
The 2,500 new employees.
Which one, where are they?
I couldn't tell you where they are.
I do know where they are, and I can tell you where they are, and that is what I'm doing. I've gone through the budget, I know where they are. For example, there's about 190 in Health and Human Services that are now potentially being cut. The result of us having hired those individuals is that our current wait times to access things like food stamps and Medicaid, self-sufficiency services, is about two and a half times less wait times than state average and required by state law. That means individuals who have urgent health needs, who are urgently in need of food assistance, are not spending 45 days waiting for help, they're getting help in 15 days. Where else are there cuts that are being proposed? And where else have we staffed up? Luge, land use, we have, as a board, have had many conversations about the importance of reducing wait times to get permits. Much of the hiring that we have done has been in our permit departments, so we could speed up permit processing for builders who would like to build affordable housing in our neighborhoods and in our region. So when you talk about cutting staff and balancing the budget on the backs of the individuals who work for this county, you are talking about cutting services, you're talking about sheriff deputies, you're talking about health and human service providers, you're talking about healthcare workers, you're talking about nurses, you're talking about the people who process permits at our land use counters. So this is not abstract numbers about abstract individuals, this is about the services that we provide to our community. Now, again, I want to be clear, I am separating the two different issues. One, the reserves, which is what this topic was supposed to be about today. The reserves conversation is about safeguarding our county against urgent and immediate federal and state cuts that may be coming down the pipeline. Not that we know for sure, but that we need to be prepared to react to if they do come. And we have good reason to think that they will come, given that we've already had a $40 million cut from our public health budget, for the public health lab that we have built here in San Diego County. And we now have not only the federal budget that came out on Friday, that causes 44% cuts to HUD, we've also seen draft budgets circulating that propose cutting $880 billion to Medicaid, which equates to about 30%. We have 900,000 people in San Diego County on Medicaid. So how are you going to cut 30% of Medicaid without that having an enormous effect on folks here in San Diego County? So again, I want to separate two issues, both are important. One, we need to pass this reserve policy, so we can be prepared to react to cuts that may come, that we have reason to believe will come, but we don't know for sure they will. Our job, as my colleague said, is to hope for the best and plan for the worst. And God knows, I would be so happy if they, if these cuts didn't happen. That would be great. I would love that, if, if we were sitting in a situation a year from now, and we would say, hey, in fact, our funding for housing is intact, our funding for healthcare in our community is intact, that would be wonderful. But my job as an elected official is not to bank on wishes and prayers. My job is to make a fiscally responsible plan to protect my community. That is the reserves conversation. The other conversation is about what is the vision that we have, and what is the role our county should play for our community? And do we want to go back to a way of being, a way that our county operated for decades, where it did the absolute minimum required by law, that left so many people in our community in need? Or do we want to step in to doing the most that we can to serve the people in our community that rely on us and expect that we're there for them in the kind of need? So, again, I'm happy to have both conversations, but I am reacting with such adamacy to the intellectual dishonesty of conflating two distinctly different conversations. And as an economist who has focused on countercyclical spending, I am, I do think it is very important to unlock our reserves, so we can be prepared for countercyclical spending. That is a very different conversation than continuing to invest in our community with the kind of services and programs that our community needs on an ongoing basis. Supervisor Montgomery, step.
I, I think it's important in this conversation to, again, work from the facts. So this $138 million number that keeps coming up, I think it, kind of, the conversation got started in the media. We had a conversation around the two-step budget process that clarified, I thought, what that actually meant. So my question for Joan, I'm going to tell you my understanding, and then you can correct me if I'm wrong about this number. And I think there are some people that were even talking about it, that don't even serve on this board, never had a budget briefing in their life from the county, that's saying there's a $138 million deficit. In my, my understanding and my conversation is that that's not accurate, that what that number was, was combining the proposals from the departments, as staff was putting the budget together, combining all those proposals, and if we got everything, every possible thing that everyone wanted, then that, basically, that was what the number would be. We now have a balanced budget before us, of course, I've already shared, you know, I think that there may be changes, but the CIO has presented us with a budget that, that did not include that type of, it's not even deficit, that gap that was out there. So Joan, could you, could you explain that for us? If I got anything wrong, because I'm really tired of misinformation, that is a problem. It's one thing to come from the public, but it's another thing to come from this dais, and it's just not acceptable. But I, but I want to, if I'm wrong, then, then Joan, please correct me.
Supervisor, the way you described the $138 million is correct, and I'll just go ahead and restate what you restated. It is reflective of our five-year planning process, and it is the difference between what we project at that time during our five-year planning process, what we project in terms of resources available for funding, and also what the departments have submitted in terms of what they see as their request to provide services to the community. So it's the difference between those two numbers, and again, the recommended budget that was released earlier, last week, earlier this month, May 1. In order to get to that place where we were able to release a budget by law, it's required to be balanced, and so that funding gap that we identified during our planning process has been closed.
Thank you. And just to clarify, and this even is specified in the board letter, there is no proposal to use reserves, which are one-time funding sources for ongoing revenue, there's just, that is not on the table. So I just want to, want to make those things clear. And unfortunately, I hate to have to hop back on here, but at this point, I really don't have much of a choice but to do it, because we can disagree again, but, but the facts are there in front of us, and it's disingenuous of us to misinform the public. Thank you.
Supervisor Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to lower the tone, we don't need to yell at each other, we can work through this. And I think that we all come with different angles. I will tell you that I'm going to be abstaining today, because you did a late docket. You knew this was a huge issue, over 350 million, your board letter said 380 million, and it has an incredible impact on my district and 600,000 unincorporated people. See, those capital improvement projects you're no longer going to have in this as a backup. If we had an earthquake like we did, it was more sustained just a month ago, we could have needed more than 60 days. And I want those projects, like housing for kids, or fire, or police, or, excuse me, fire or sheriff's stations in my district, to continue to be built. Because we have one problem doesn't mean we're not going to have a fire on top of it later. And I had hardly any time to get the information to my constituents. I want to know what my constituents think. Are we going in the right direction or the wrong direction? And then, then, what I thought was interesting is this, you all talked around the edges, but what you're really doing today is proving to SEIU how important it is District One is for giving them bonuses. Yeah, it's not raises, it's going to be bonuses. Why else would they be giving us keys? Why else are they so focused? And if this is money coming from capital improvement reserve, then why isn't it designated to capital improvement today? It's not. So I think it's disingenuous to say that's not your plan to give raises, when it's very clear from SEIU's communications today, this is a, this is another COVID bonus. We gave out $42 million in COVID bonuses to our staff, and they work hard. I'm not, I'm not making any comment to that. But if we want to work together, we've got to be more transparent. Instead of doing a last-minute deal in the dark of the night, why won't you just release this two weeks in advance, or let's talk about it next month, and have time to drill down on the numbers? Now, I will tell you, I made a request of Ebony for information on the budget, and I was told I'm not going to get it until the May 1st, when she turns out the budget. How can I do my job if staff is withholding information I need to do my job? And when we asked Joan for information, we got all sorts of crazy numbers. You know, how can it be, on one hand, 350, you're saying 380, other people are saying 245, and the more we drill, the more Swiss cheese holes there are. And I don't think anybody's trying to mislead anybody, I just don't think we've been told the same information. And if you want to move forward with this, I think county staff has to give us a full-on presentation where we can drill down, in that my district, who may be two hours away, will actually know about it in a timely fashion. And maybe we notice it with 30 days, so we can include everybody, and not just the people that work here, who are going to show up no matter what. But let's include the constituents that we represent, so they know we're talking about their fire station, we're talking about their sheriff's station, and we're talking about these projects that would be at risk. Now, those things all rotate, and yes, what Joan said is correct, the proposed budget balances it, it no longer has the structural deficit. But if we don't pass that budget, we have a structural deficit. Again, everybody's right, but nobody's connecting the dots, because we can't, because I can't get information back in a timely fashion. We put this through, and then staff, who's responsible for finance, weren't there on Friday for us to pursue and get the information. You know what? I'm trying to do my job. And by the way, our number-one job is to pass a budget on time, not kick the can. So I get it, you're all going to respond to me, I'm abstaining, you can say anything you like, I've heard you all, and yelling it at me does not make it right.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Montgomery, step?
Last time? She's still up again? Okay, great.
Just two things, one is, you know, I just want to say that myself and the acting chair are the authors of this. So I think any, anything to take up with staff, I guess, can be done another time, but that we did, this was a late docket by us, so I, I would rather take that, those criticisms. It was brought before and withdrawn from a previous agenda, but this was, this was the acting chair and myself. And if you want to discuss it in a month, then, then maybe you can change your vote, then it'll come back, and you'll have more time to review it. But I just want to, you know, make sure that I understand your concerns. Hurt everybody here, I'm certainly not yelling, certainly not yelling, but like I said, it's a moral issue for me. And I don't want to hide behind that, it doesn't have to be that for anyone else, but it certainly is that for me, and I've been... And I've been, I think, from this vantage point, pretty receptive of folks' different thoughts. I just don't like misinformation, and I don't, I think we should be in a position to give the appropriate information to our constituents and beyond, no matter what, no matter what our position is. So that's all I just wanted to say.
Thank you. Just some final comments. First of all, thank you, Supervisor Anderson. I'm, will be happy to redocket this at a future date, and we can have a longer runway. I do want to say I did emergency docket it at the last minute because I saw the budget that came out, and so it was really in response to that. Certainly, we've been cooking this for a long time and just felt like, oh, gosh, we better move now, but we're going to have just as many reasons to move on this later as we do today. So I appreciate your comments, and, you know, we'll certainly be happy to redocket this with a longer runway at a future date. So thank you very much for that. Just wanted to make sure it was clear why, after such a long time of considering this, why it really felt urgent, given the circumstances that we are now facing and the news that came out on Thursday and Friday. So again, and I also agree that it would be really helpful to have as much transparency as possible and as many conversations. And I certainly did have quite a long time to do a deep dive on these fiscal issues as part of that fiscal subcommittee. And whatever I can do, I'm happy to, as the author of this item, happy to work with your team to try to share the information that we were, that was put together by our fiscal subcommittee to bring you along in what we researched at that time. So just wanted to share that with you. And again, you know, I just would like to reiterate the importance of really centering, making sure that we are good, are doing our part to protect our communities from whatever might come, from whatever shocks might come, and be that wildfires or be that cuts by the federal government. And I think that's, for me, a huge part of what our job is, and really centering that, taking that responsibility seriously and being ready to respond in real time. So thank you very much. Supervisor Anderson, if you wanted to make another comment?
Just briefly, thank you. Thank you both for acknowledging the late docket. Now you know why. We voted in that board letter last meeting about the late dockets and how important it is. And I just appreciate you fessing up and taking responsibility for that. And I understand, I think that the public needs to understand, you two can work on it, you could work on it for months, but Jim and I can't because that'd be a Brown Act violation. So you're really handcuffed in what you can reveal to us unless it's publicly docketed. That's why the public docket has to be 30 days out so that we have the time to address the issue and ask the questions necessary. I don't want to delay the process, but my district has no clue. And, you know, somebody puts something on and takes it off, we may or may not ever see it again. So it's not like I'm going out to my district every week saying they may propose this, they may cut this, they may do this. My district would get worn out with all the forecasting when nothing's real. So I just, I just want to thank you again, both of you, for being understanding.
Okay, thank you for a lively conversation. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Vice President Lawson Reimer, that motion fails due to the lack of required affirmative votes, with Supervisor Anderson abstaining, Supervisor Desmond voting no, and Supervisor Montgomery stepping, and Lawson Reimer voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, what do we have next? Give me a second.
SEIU. 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 SEIU.
Okay, we're going to break, we'll break for lunch. We'll be back in 45 minutes.
Board is in recess for 45 minutes until 12:50.